I'd like to call the February 9th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I will-
I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, 21A1, to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and the Board will come out of executive session and reconvene in an open meeting.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Madam Chair, my name is Patricia Joyce. I have received notification regarding the agenda item before you. I respectfully- Could you go up to the microphone, just so members can hear you, please? If you can. Madam Chair, Board of Selectmen, my name is Patricia Joyce. I have received notification regarding the agenda item before you. I respectfully request that the matter be conducted in public, open session at this time. Attorney Hennigan, I haven't done this one. Do we take a vote on the motion, or?
There's no need to take a vote on the motion. The employee has exercised her right to have this matter in public session, and the matter would be then discussed in an open session beginning at 7:00.
Okay. And regarding any information that we would have received in executive session?
That would be now made public, and can be discussed at the 7:00 session.
At 7:00? Okay.
Let me make a motion, we recess till 7:00.
Mr. Simoni?
I'll wait till there's a vote on the re- Well, actually, I have a superseding motion, so it doesn't matter. I move, since this matter is now to be discussed in public, I move that this agenda item be postponed until our next meeting. I asked for a copy of the report that is supposed to be discussed as part of this, and I don't think it's fair to any member of this Board to have to sit here and discuss a report that was given with no opportunity to review what's in the report. We should have the opportunity to digest the information in there before we have to discuss a report in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion before I ask Mr. Hennigan to address the report issue?
I'd like a second for discussion purposes.
Mr. Hennigan, regarding the request by Mr. Simoni and to see the report prior to executive session?
Madam Chairman, the report was made in anticipation or in at least consideration of an employee's, of a complaint made against an employee. The report, therefore, was a confidential matter. That matter now at the exercise of the employee has, the town has now authorized to discuss this in public, and that report could now be released at 7:00 to the Board to review.
Okay. Mr. Simoni?
Under discussion. I disagree with Mr. Hennigan. The email that I received from the Chair specifically said, made no mention of anything to do with any complaint against an employee. The email stated that it was, it was a report, and the only reason that this was moved to executive session is because I refused requests by both the Chair and the Town Manager as to whether or not I was going to discuss any persons. Now, based on the conversation that I had with the Attorney General's Office, and specifically the open meeting, number one, the reason to go into executive session, I do not believe existed in the first place, because there was never any mention. It was only when I refused to state whether or not I was going to discuss anyone specifically. I asked for a copy of the report. That was my reply to that, and that was well within my means. At that point, it was determined we, this would become an executive session. Based on, based on that, every member of this Board should have an opportunity to review any report and not have to discuss it with no notice, no opportunity to see what's in it.
Before I let you-
Not fair.
Before I let you address this, as a courtesy to Mr. Simoni, and because he's the one that, that brought up the issue, I did send an email to him based on a recommendation to see if, in fact, he was willing to discuss the report, which did not name anyone. He responded by email that he wanted to see the report and could not guarantee that he would not mention names. And that's when I was advised through you that, therefore, because we cannot expose to the town to liability, it would have to become an executive session matter, because we cannot discuss the, an employee's character in public. Am I correct?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, yes, or a complaint made against an employee.
A complaint made against an employee.
Yes, and just so everybody knows, the idea has been always to err on the side of the employee in terms of protecting the privacy of the employees and the, any employees' interests that are, that are involved here. And so that's why the option was, was made available to the employee to have a discussion in, in an executive session, which has now been waived.
Mr. Simoni?
So, again, if, this reason does not exist, because we're, we're going, planning on going into executive session, or were planning on going into executive session, based on the premise of what someone might say. We could do that on any given night, if, and there is absolutely nothing in open meeting. I went through it several times. I spoke to the Attorney General's Office. They said it's not a reason to go into executive session. You cannot go into executive session to try and anticipate what someone may or may not say. I've been here for five years. I'm fully aware of what the rules are. If I do something that violates those rules, anyone is more than welcome to file a complaint and let the Attorney General's Office investigate the complaint. And specifically, we sat here a little less than a year ago, when we were discussing the Town Manager's evaluations, four times in the same meeting. Mr. Grossman was cautioned, once by me, three times by the Chair. He came dangerously close to using the name of an employee during a, a point he brought up about performance reviews. He was cautioned four times. We didn't stop the meeting. We didn't move further discussions into executive session for fear that Mr. Grossman or another member of this Board might use an employee's name. So why are we doing it now? Everything that we're, we're planning on doing right here violates open meeting law.
The difference is that you put it in writing.
There's no diff-
You, you put it in wr-
No, 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 no.
You put it, excuse me, Mr. Simoni, and I was speaking.
I was speaking, and you cut me off.
You, you put it in writing, saying that you could not guarantee, "Based on advice from counsel, we cannot expose a town employee."
I didn't say I couldn't guarantee. And first of all, you, you're mixing what you said here. Your email specifically asked if I had any intention of mentioning names, and I said I had no intention of saying one way or the other what my plan was until I was able to read the report.
Correct.
This entire, well, that's not what you just said. You're, you're putting words in my mouth, making it sound like I, I was planning on, you know, going behind the scenes and formulating a plan to hang someone out to dry, which was never my intention. The bottom line is, we cannot go into executive session for fear of what any member up here might say. The rules are specific, the laws are specific, and they're very clear. If one of us does something, anybody is perfectly capable of filing a complaint and letting it be investigated. But if we start going into executive session, because we're worried about what anyone up here might say, we might as well just hold everything in executive session.
Mr. Hennigan?
As my understanding, that the, the reason for the executive session not was, was not to protect somebody from saying anything against anybody, but it was specific to a particular employee who had become named in this in a previous public session. The Board did ask for an investigation to be conducted of some accusations that did involve that employee. Once that became known, and, and the report was issued, there were no names issued in the report. Therefore, it became an issue as to whether those, that Patricia person would be discussed in, in open session. When it was determined that perhaps it could be, we had to avoid that, any kind of exposure there, and offer the employee the right to go into executive session, and therefore, notice was provided to the employee. Employee has now waived that right. There is no executive session, and the matter will be discussed in public session.
Mr. Simoni?
So you just, you just said that there were no names mentioned in this report?
Correct.
Then how can we go, how could we have even had this executive session agenda item on, on the agenda? If there are no names in that report, then the reason to go into executive session doesn't exist. Once again, executive session was, in fact, as it states in the Chair's email to me, and in the Town Manager's email to me, this executive session was, in fact, scheduled because of what I might say. And it absolutely violates the law to do that.
Madam Chair, the complaint, the, the purpose for the executive session was to discuss the complaint of an employee and the actions of an employee. That was the subject matter upon which the complaint, the report was written, and whether there were not there any names written in the actual report. The context of this report was, was based on some allegations that were made about conduct that occurred at an election. And again, to err on the side of being cautious and protect the interests of the employee, that's why the recommendation was made for-
So is there, is there any action that this Board needs to take before we adjourn to 7:00?
No, the employee has waived the right to an executive session, and that matter will be discussed in public session. There's no further action that the Board needs to-
Okay, so there is a motion on the table to-
Can I just ask a quick question?
You may.
Why can't we have the report before 7:00, Mr. Hennigan?
Oh, I suppose you could have the report before 7:00 now, yes. I, I, I was thinking the discussion of the report could take place, it was going to be take place. If you want to have the read the report now, you could have the report now.
So, so who is entitled to a copy of the report?
Board of Selectmen right now. I would, I would limit the report to the Board of Selectmen at this point in time, until we can have that discussion.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to continue this until the next meeting. Mr. Coppenter seconded it. This isn't the executive session. To recess this until-
(inaudible) 7:00.
Okay. So there's a motion to recess the meeting until 7:00?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Point of order, my motion supersedes the most, that, that's one of the lowest motions, mine supersedes. I'd like a vote on the motion to postpone.
That's why I asked Mr.-
I think he just said he thought the motion should, that he thought the meeting should be held.
I asked it to be postponed until the next meeting.
Okay, and Mr.-
I did put it in the form of a motion, and Mr. Coppenter seconded it.
That's why I asked about the motion. So, so Mr. Simoni has, has made a motion that we hold this matter until the next meeting. Mr. Coppenter has seconded it for discussion, so that's a valid motion?
Yes.
Okay, and do we need a roll call vote on this?
That would be up to the Chair.
Okay.
I just want to be clear. I was seconding Ken's motion for discussion purposes. I didn't, I didn't believe that Steve had made a motion.
A motion to recess?
Yes.
So I'll put it in a form of a motion. Motion to postpone this agenda item until the next meeting for the second time, because I would like to have an opportunity to review the report before I discuss it, or vote on it, or whatever is required as part of the report. I don't think it's fair to any member of this Board to have to sit here, have 15 minutes to digest something that obviously is important, and then to take a position on it.
Is there a second?
I just have a question.
Regarding the motion?
Yes. This is, this is an action or a request by an employee of the town to, about something that was said in open meeting. This was brought up in October, I believe it was. So we, we all are aware of general ideas, but I would think that it would be up to the employee whether they want to continue it or not. I don't know. That's, that would be my question to counsel. Is, is it a Board decision to continue?
It's always, Madam Chairman, through you, it is certainly a, a Board's decision ultimately. I think consideration to the employee might be part of that decision. The, what was before the Board and what is before the Board is, a notice was provided to an employee to discuss a matter that the Board asked to have investigated that involved this employee. That was a matter that could have gone to executive session. Employee has not, decided not to go to executive session. Employee is here and prepared to respond and answer any questions. The report would be given to the Board at this particular time, based on that information now provided to the Board from the employee, and it's always up to the Board to decide what to do with a particular matter.
And the Board would not have received the, the report prior to tonight's meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So is there a second on Mr. Simoni's motion?
I'd like to look at the report before making any sort of decisions, and where the employee is here, I'd like to wait till 7:00 and then-
Is there a second on Mr. Simoni's motion? So before you, you have a motion to adjourn till 7:00?
Recede.
And a roll call, recess till 7:00. Roll call vote, Mr. Coppenter?
Aye.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoni?
Sure.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. We're in recess till 7:00. I'd like to call the February 9th meeting of the Board of Selectmen back to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded, and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we go back to the agenda, it's with sad news that I report that former Selectman Joan Cassidy passed away on February 1st. Anyone who lives in Auburn has probably seen Joan walking on every street in Auburn. She was known as the Streetwalker. Joan was, served on the Board of Selectmen from 1982 to 1994. She was an elected town meeting member from 1995, and her term would have expired in 2017. She also served on the Library Trustees, the Solid Waste Committee, the Worcester County Advisory Board, the Charter Commission, the Recycling Committee, Emergency Management, Emergency Planning Committee, the Study Committee to Consider Drawing Precinct Lines, the Town Government Study Committee, the Bylaw Committee, and the School Buildings Committee. She will be soiling as she was such an addition to the Town of Auburn, and I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence for Joan Cassidy. Thank you. So we are back in open session, where a matter that was scheduled to be in executive session will now be heard in public session. Board of Selectmen members were given a copy of a report, and I am going to, and had the opportunity, only for a few minutes, but had an opportunity to review the report. I'm going to, at first, turn to the Town Manager and ask her to summarize what has happened, and then I will ask the Town Clerk to give a summary of her report, and then I will look to Town Counsel to see what we do next.
Now that everyone's had an opportunity to look at the report, I move that we postpone this to our next meeting.
Is there a second? There's no second, we'll move on.
Through the Chair. The report that you have before you is a report that was prepared by the Board of Registars. To back up, the Board took a vote for the Town Manager and Town Counsel, Robert Hennigan, to investigate an incident that had allegedly taken place at the May 13 election, that had been raised by a member of the Board of Selectmen at a meeting, I believe, in August. The Board asked me to investigate the issue with Town Counsel. I met with Town Counsel as well as Labor Counsel, because the incident involved an election worker, which under state law is a municipal employee. Because it involved a municipal employee, Town Counsel and I also spoke with our Labor Counsel to receive, to make sure we were all moving forward in the appropriate manner with regard to the employee. As a result, Town Counsel recommended to us that the Board of Registars look into the issue as they oversee and are in charge of elections. The Board of Registars then asked the Town Clerk to provide a report to them on the alleged incident involving an envelope that had an absentee ballot in it. The Town Clerk provided a report to the Board of Registars, who in turn provided a report to me, which has been shared with you. That report was dated January 7th, 2015. I would turn to Town Counsel, should we invite at this point the Town Clerk to come up, because I don't want to, I don't want to ad lib as to the report, you do have the report in front of you, but for the sake of the public, I'd like the Town Clerk to say it. And also, I do want to say, when we're done, I did go back and, and find the string of emails referring the reason that we are actually in public session, not executive session. So I do have those when we're ready to get that.
Point of order.
Simoni?
Yeah. Based on my conversation with the Attorney General's Office, I'd like to note for the record, Sharon, exactly my objection, both to the report and to any information that will be given by the Town Clerk. The Town Clerk was a witness to the event, and it is completely, completely wrong for someone who witnessed the event to be the person investigating the event, as was Mr. Hennigan, party to conversations after the fact, and he also investigated. So I want my objection on the record.
Sharon, you have that? Okay, thank you.
Through the Chair. So if I may, I'd like to ask Town Clerk Ellen Gabriel to come up and just to summarize the event. And again, I just want to repeat, the Town Clerk reported the event to the Board of Registars, who oversees this process. The Board of Registars then provided a report to me. The Board of Registars does not report to me. I do not appoint them, and that, therefore, it was appropriate for them to provide this to me. I would also, just for the record, state that the Town Clerk does not report to me. So there is no concern there. The Town Clerk is an elected official. Thank you.
Good evening. Ellen Gabriel, Town Clerk. This incident occurred May of 2013, May 21st, 2013. I was at an election. The envelopes, the absentee envelopes were distributed to all of the precinct clerks in the same manner, and they then opened the envelopes and pulled out the ballots, and you have to separate the ballots from the envelope, so you don't have a connection to how a person voted. The elections is very clear about preserving the privacy of the ballot. One of those envelopes had a white ballot come out. I was informed by both an observer in that precinct and the precinct clerk that this had occurred. So I called the Secretary of State's office, because this is a very unusual incident, and they advised me that as long as only one ballot came out of the envelope, that I should count it, that the color did not matter, that it was the intent of the voter that had to be maintained, and that intent was that that voter vote, and that that vote, that vote be counted. So, anyway, there was a meeting held by the Board of Registars on January 2nd, and we went through the process of absentee voting. At no time during this process were there less than two people involved in the handling of these ballots, and absentee voters give us sealed ballots, and those ballots are brought to the polls and, and distributed. The only time there was less than two people involved in the process was when the voter was voting in the office. There, in 20 years, extra ballots were always kept in the off, in the room where the voters voted, and even though they were closed, they were not sealed. I have no idea, but that's a logical conclusion that I came to. Voters do not like to admit they made a mistake. Election law allows voters to spoil two ballots if they make a mistake and want to revote. So anyway, as a result of this, and the advice, I called the Secretary of State's office, I followed their advice, and as a result of that, there are no longer any ballots available to voters except absentee ballots.
Okay.
There are, you know, changes were made.
Okay. Through the Chair, if I may. I can't see, Mrs. Gabriel, I'm sorry. Mrs. Gabriel, are you complete with your report for now?
I think so, unless you have other questions.
Okay, I'll ask you to just remain there.
Okay.
The Town Manager is going to give us information, and then I'll speak with the Town Counsel.
I, I just want to, for the sake of the public, I know this report, and this report will be public. It is now a public document, and anyone can get a copy of this, but I would point to two things. The first is the summary of the Board of Registars in their letter to me on January 7th that said, "It is the decision of the Registars that based upon the Town Clerk's review of her office's process and the actions taken, when a white ballot was discovered, as well as the precinct data sheet from that election day, that the absentee ballot was counted properly, and there was no evidence to substantiate any wrongdoing on the part of any Auburn town employee." Want to then go back to the first page of the Town Clerk's report to the Board of Registars, which states the Town Clerk, I, I think this is important to reiterate, "At the time that this incident happened, the Town Clerk called the Election Division of the Secretary of State's office at that exact time for advice on how to handle this situation. Legal counsel at the Secretary of State's office noted that a voter has a reasonable expectation that the absentee ballot, no matter the color, will be counted," as the Town Clerk just stated. "Legal counsel also advised that as long as only one ballot came out of the envelope, that it should be counted regardless of the color, to preserve the intent of the voter to cast a ballot, and that the notation of this situation should be included in the precinct clerk's notes for this election." The summary for the Town Clerk, therefore, there are a number of other things here. "Based on this review, no impropriety by any election worker occurred with regard to the election on May 21, 2013, and the handling of the absentee ballots." Therefore, I've been asked to investigate this. I was not there. So likewise, being a party that was not there, by getting a report from the Board of Registars, by getting a report from the Town Clerk, both reports have indicated that there were no improprieties, and that was substantiated by the Secretary of State's office at the time that the incident happened, and the Secretary of State's legal counsel confirmed on that.
Thank you. And is that all you have for now?
Yes.
Attorney Hennigan, at this point, would the Board of Selectmen ask questions? Would the town employee have an opportunity to speak?
Either one. I think you, the Chair could decide how she wants to proceed. The Board could ask questions of the Clerk, or Ms. Jacobson, and then perhaps give the opportunity to the employee.
Okay.
Or the employee can go first, and then you can ask your question.
Okay. First, regarding the process and the investigation, do Board members have any questions for the Town Manager? Mr. Coppenter?
Just a quick question, because it does mention several places that an observer was at the precinct. Do we know the identity of the observer, and why?
I would turn to the Town Clerk, who was there.
Okay, so we'll save that for the town, one minute, Ellen, okay?
Okay.
Are there any questions for the Town Manager? Okay, so we'll move on to questions for the Town Clerk, and I'll, just because you've already asked it. Did you hear that question?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Through the Chair. There were two observers in that precinct. Other precincts only had one observer sitting at the check-in table. That precinct had two observers, one sitting at the check-in table and one standing between precincts watching that precinct operate, okay? And it was the individual who was standing, watching, and that was Nicholas Hammond, who came to me, in addition to the precinct clerk, to make me aware of that, the occurrence.
Did you have-
Yeah, I just, why, why didn't we ask Mr. Hammond for testimony?
It wasn't my hearing. I mean, it wasn't, I mean, the Board of Registars felt confident that they didn't need, didn't need that. It was reported to me on election day. I would just like to say, if this had been requested immediately after the election, there would have been material that could have been examined, that could have disproved or approved. That's all gone. The only thing that's left is the Clerk's report. That's permanent record.
How long after an election, Ellen, do you have to keep?
Through the Chair. Town elections are 30 days. State elections are 22 months.
Thank you.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, there's a, there's a piece of paper attached to this report called the clerk's book notes. I'm sure you're familiar with it, right?
Yes.
So, excuse me, do you have a copies to reference?
Yes, I'm familiar with it, yes.
No, but if he's going to reference it specifically, do you have a copy of that? Sharon, do you have another copy? Just so you know what he's referencing?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Smontian.
When is, when is this submitted?
At the end of the polls.
So is this, this is a public document?
Yes. Clerk's reports are public documents. At the end of the election.
During the discussion in October of when we were asked to verify the list of poll workers, and I raised an objection, it seems to me that this, this piece of paper could have ended this entire thing before we wasted time or money on any kind of investigation. I simply asked, were you aware? And?
I wasn't here.
You were here.
Well, I wasn't here at the, that meeting.
You weren't here for that meeting, but you were here at a subsequent meeting. You sat in a meeting with Mr. Henigan and the poll checker, just this past May, where both you and Mr. Henigan acknowledged the fact that there was mishandling of a ballot. And the question was raised as to whether or not you felt comfortable with that person remaining as, as a poll worker, and you said yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I simply said that I objected, or I had cause to question one person on the list. And everything that I stated, it's right here with that person's signature on it. It says, "White ballot was in voter's absentee ballot." Why did we have to go through this entire charade?
I don't understand it either. I mean, I really don't. You waited a year and a half.
The night that, as soon as someone came to you and said, "There's going to be an investigation."
There wasn't an investigation for a year and a half.
That's exactly my point. My point is, when the board authorized this investigation, why didn't, why wasn't this piece of paper produced? It could have, it could have put a stop to all of this.
I have a question for you.
I mean, time, resources, money, God knows, just wasted on this ridiculous investigation.
I.
When it's right here in black and white.
I'm not, I wouldn't agree with you that it was a ridiculous investigation, but.
Of course you wouldn't. You should be recusing yourself from this entire procedure.
So, I know that under the ethics rules, first of, of which I know, and there's no reason for me to recuse, but under the ethics rules, a member of a board can also confer with town council and get an opinion. Mr. Smontian has said publicly several times that because, in his words, not mine, "Mrs. Joyce is a close, personal friend of mine, I must recuse." I have stated publicly that I do not need to recuse, and it is, it is not up to him to make a determination whether I need to recuse. It's up to the board member who's participating whether they need to make, to recuse. Could you just address the recusal?
Madam Chair, the issue of conflict of interest is personal to the individual, and it's the individual who suffers consequences if an individual does not recuse himself if a, if a conflict exists. And so, no board or no other member of a board can require anyone to recuse themselves or suggest that they should be recused. That is an issue that is left to the individual involved.
Thank you. Mr. Smontian?
So, is it, is it, did you just make the same argument I made? That we're all aware of the rules, and if someone wants to investigate, they can file a complaint?
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
I don't know if that's what I said, Mr. Smontian. The individual who feels, if an individual feels that they have a conflict and they want to have an opinion relative to that, they can inquire of town council, or they can inquire of the State Ethics Commission. No member of a board or no board could vote to require someone to recuse themselves.
That's all right. We're getting off track. I mean, this is all just subterfuge, anyway. I, I just, I just don't understand why this entire thing carried through to the point that it did. Can you, can you give me a ballpark number on how mu, how much the town was billed for your time spent on this?
We don't have that available.
Excuse me?
Mr. Holstrom's called a point of order. What procedurally are we doing incorrect?
I think that we're not following along with the discussion tonight. Now we're talking about expenses. I think we want to stay with what we're speaking of tonight, and it's this report here in front of us.
The executive session matter that became public was the report, and you certainly can ask for a report at a later date.
Anything, anything that's part of this report is open, is fair game for this conversation.
But, but, well, I'll save my comments. Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the chair, I just want to clarify something. For the record, the report was done, the investigation was done, because this board took a vote for this investigation to be done. At the time, a serious allegation had been made against a municipal employee as an, that constituted potentially election fraud, that's serious. We were advised by town council and labor council both to investigate this. The board took a motion that we investigate this. It was done because public comments were made at that time. It wasn't done to waste taxpayer dollars, and it wasn't done to waste my time or yours. It was done as a result of a board vote. That being said, the report is now here. We have the report. It shows, according to this report, it is showing that there was no impropriety, which is the issue that we're trying to stay with. I would also note that as far as an investigation, many people were witnesses to that event. This was not a criminal investigation. We discussed this. We were not investigating either the person who made the allegation or the people who saw the incident. We were investigating the actual incident.
When she finished all of that show.
And that's what was done. So there were not investigations done amongst the, all of the poll workers, there were many of them. It was purely done for the ballot that was polled, the specific incident that was mentioned, nothing else.
Mr. Smontian?
So we, I mean, that's, that's kind of a chicken's way out, but to say that the board authorized that, I mean, you're the, you're the head of the town, you're the CEO of the, of the business. I mean, I cannot believe what you just said. The board voted, so I'm absolved. At no point, you thought.
Mrs. Smontian, I do not sit there.
At no point did you even, before, all of this started, before we spent any money, spent any resources or any, anything on this, to ask the town clerk, is there anything that exists that corroborates the statement that was made?
Through the chair. This one sheet of paper does not address the accusation that was made against the employee.
It absolutely does. It's right there in her own handwriting.
Okay, so.
Could I, through the chair?
Yes.
Could I just say, this was not kept a secret. Immediately after the election, I informed the Board of Registars, Dan was a member then, and we discussed it at the first meeting. And then a year later, when Mr. Hammond came in, because he was organizing observers for the May 2014, there was a discussion between Robert Henigan, myself, and him about this exact issue. So there was nobody trying to keep anything secret, but I do agree with Ms. Jacobson that it was, the allegation wasn't whether it happened, everybody knew it happened. There were enough poll workers there. There are four poll workers, plus two observers, plus voters, who all know, knew that it happened. And that's all that this document says, is that it happened.
So, exactly my point. So first of all, I guess my next question then would be, knowing that your Board of Registars had a discussion post-election in 2013.
Right.
In 2013, you had to present a list to this board of poll checkers, and that was never mentioned. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it was, anyone was trying to keep it a secret. What I'm saying is, why did we waste all of this time, resources, and money, when I stated a fact that was public knowledge?
We all knew it was public knowledge.
Then why, again, why wasn't that said? The minute someone came to you and said, "Ellen, we want, we need to investigate this comment." No, it happened. Here's the, here's the proof. It happened. So there's no further need to have a discussion. We don't have to spend, I don't know how much money paying Mr. Henigan to be part of an investigation. We don't have to waste town manager resources, we don't have to waste administration resources. We don't have to waste anything. We don't have to spend one dime of taxpayer money on investigation, because we're investigating something that's public knowledge. I don't understand.
I wasn't the one who made the allegation.
And, and I'll just say that it was a very serious allegation against the town.
How is it an allegation? It's right here in black and white.
What you alleged did not occur.
I stated a fact.
No, you, what you alleged did not occur.
It's right here in black and white. I said.
What you alleged.
An improper ballot came out of an envelope. That's what I said.
Okay. I think that the town employee who's the subject of this matter can be heard next. Thank you. This is, it, I guess the expression is, it adds insult to injury to him, Mr. Smontian, Selectman Smontian, talk about, you know, I don't even get how he's addressing himself today. It wasn't, what, what he did was accuse me, as the clerk in the precinct, of voting fraud. It's very clear if anybody has, I'm hoping that he actually listened to the, it's August 25th meeting, it's still available to anybody that wants to, to hear it. It's at 17 minutes and 30 seconds on the August 25th archived meeting. Some of what he said, I actually wrote some things out. He started by saying that he thinks when voters cast ballots, that they have a reasonable, in any reasonable reason, that their votes will be counted. Poll checker informed me that Ms. Joyce pulled an improper ballot from what was supposed to be sealed. He was then interrupted. He was asked if he had filed a formal complaint. At first, he said the complaint was filed. Then he said, "I don't have to file a complaint. Telling people why I am not supporting someone on the list, I have every right to address why I'm not supporting someone." Again, he said, in this August 25th meeting, "If someone is pulling an improper ballot from an absentee ballot envelope, and it is not actually an absentee ballot, that person should not be on the list." You know, there was a lot of, this is 10 minutes of his discussion in regard to why I should not be appointed an precinct clerk. We're not poll checkers, we're election workers. He, you know, it, this is the biggest thing that he said. Mr. Smontian said, and you can hear it, "It was supposed to be an absentee ballot. It was actually a regular ballot, and it was one of the ballots that was in Ms. Joyce's care." I think that his words said that the white ballot was, I was responsible for it being in the envelope. You know, that, he again talked about, you know, that a person should have their vote counted as they cast it. When an improper ballot is pulled from an envelope, even when there is an appearance that things are not on the up and up. There was nothing about whether this happened or not. When an improper ballot, his words, "When an improper ballot is pulled from an envelope, that gives me cause that even the appearance that things are not," I guess I'm repeating myself there. I'm not making an allegation, I am stating a fact. He repeatedly said that. He was stating the fact that I was responsible for the improper ballot being in an absentee envelope.
Point of order.
Excuse me, Mrs. Joyce?
Ms. Joyce is putting words in my mouth. She's reading, she's reading excerpts, and then she's adding "I think" to it. That's, as far as I'm concerned, that's slander.
Well, the record will speak for itself, and, and she's.
She's stating as fact her thoughts. It's not. So stick to the facts, fine, I'm happy to listen, but "I think, I think, I think" is not, you're telling people you think you know what was going on in my mind.
Mrs. Joyce, did you want to finish your statement?
You know, just that, I don't want any confusion tonight for people that, listening to this, that this wasn't comments made by an elected board member with forethought. This happened 15 months before. The incident that you well knew about when it happened.
I did not. Again, you're assuming.
I did not. A point of order.
Mr.
Mr. Smontian should not be addressing Ms. Joyce. She has to fly.
Ms. Joyce should not be allowed to make allegations that aren't true.
Mr. Smontian, you can address your comments through the chair, not directly to Mrs. Joyce. Ms. Joyce, did you want?
I think it's been established, it happened in May, the third, it would have been the third Tuesday or Thursday. May 21st. May 21st, in the, in the year 2013. 15 months later, it was, it was brought publicly with the allegation, which was hearsay, that I was responsible for the improper ballot being in the envelope. That, it's, it's there for everyone to see, to hear. It's very disconcerting that someone would, would, you know, with malice, do this to an employee of the town. I mean, if it's, if it's me, who else is it going to be next? But, you know, I, I have a card here that Mr. Smontian leaves in public venues that represents the town of Auburn as a selectman.
Did you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just probably have a closing statement, but that's.
Okay. Mr. Smontian?
Through the chair. Let's, let's be honest. I mean, if, first of all, if I knew about this when it happened, don't you think I would have raised the point that fall, when we were given the list? I didn't, because I didn't know about it. Again, that's an assumption, through the chair. Secondly, I don't know what my card has to do with anything. You know, and last of all, I'm going to say, this paper is very clear, and it's signed by you. It says that an improper ballot that was in your precinct was pulled from the incorrect envelope. End of story. You were the person who was there. So how about accepting the fact that this is a serious matter, and just acknowledging the fact that.
I didn't.
There's a lot of plausible.
Excuse me, Mrs. Joyce.
There are a lot of plausible scenarios here of how that incorrect ballot got into that envelope.
And.
But the bottom line is, whether it's you or anyone else, and I'm, and, and you brought up the appearance of impropriety. So I'm going to tell you why I used those words specifically. Because every single thing you read, and I don't know if you're required to do it every two years, as we are, to take the ethics training, but it is very clear, and it uses those exact words. There are several things that refer to elected and appointed officials, where it says, here's the law, conflict of interest, whatever it may be. And, and I'll, I'll give you a specific example. Conflict of interest gives you a, a clear list of people, immediate, family, blah, 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 who, if you were to act on their behalf, it would be considered a conflict of interest. And it throws in the statement, or the appearance of impropriety. So that's why I use those exact words, because I have no difference of opinion from today that I had from the first day I sat up here, whether any of us like it or not. And I have said it time and time again, I hold the oath I took to sit up here, the same as the oath I took the day that I enlisted in, in the military. We should be held accountable to a higher standard than any of the people sitting there, any of the people at home, anyone else who doesn't, who isn't part of any organization, elected official, whatever it is. I hold myself to the same standards. I hold myself to the same standards and I don't hold anyone's, anyone, any differently. So this is a, to me, the seriousness of what happened is being swept under the rug and, and, and we're talking about everything but what actually happened. The bottom line is something happened that shouldn't have happened. Ballots were in the room. And I applaud you, Ellen, for correcting that as quickly as you did because, I mean, changing process is not an easy thing. I know how hard it is sometimes, just to, what seems to most folks to be a simple process change. I, I truly applaud you for getting that changed as quickly as possible to remove any doubt. That's fantastic. So let's stop talking about all the other stuff. I raised an objection for one simple reason. I felt that a standard was not met. End of story. So you can call it what you want, you can paint it however you want. Everyone here can play the victim. It is what it is. We didn't meet a standard, plain and simple, and we are all part of the town.
But I was singled out to be maligned by something that happened in the election.
Whose name is on this piece of paper?
I was singled out to be maligned. Wait, we're not going to rile the, so just, um, just for the record, because Mrs. Simonian just referenced it, nowhere on this clerk's book notes does it say improper, does it use the words improper ballot. You just stated that it does.
Okay, sorry.
I'm, I'm just saying, just for the record because you did, once again, state something.
I have a question.
It does not, it does not say improper ballot on this report.
I have a question.
Certainly, Mr. Simonian.
I have a question to you. Are, are you going to, are you going to mince and dissect anyone else's words except for mine?
This is a very serious matter.
I agree. I absolutely agree. It seems I'm the only one who, who has seen that from day one. The, the rest of this is all window dressing. The seriousness of what's going on has been swept under the rug. Now all of a sudden, it's a serious matter.
No, the allegation you made is a serious matter.
A, a ballot.
A ballot, it should have been addressed with the town clerk because there were several people who, who.
Why wasn't it?
There were several people who handled that ballot and were in the vicinity of that ballot, yet you chose to single out Mrs. Joyce and accuse her of voter fraud.
That was based on the information that I was given that came from a meeting that, where Ms. Gabri and Mr. Hennington acknowledged to that poll checker that that person was responsible for the ballot. That person's name is on this sheet as the person who was responsible for the ballot. I, I don't know why we're talking about all this other stuff. The, it, it says it right there in black and white and, and we're, and we're just trying to mislead people to, to, away from what actually happened.
No, Mr. Simonian, we're not.
Sure we are.
You made a very serious allegation to someone's reputation.
Oh my God. It was a public record that it happened.
Please, don't use the Lord's name in vain.
Okay, I'm not using the Lord's name. It was a public record that it happened. A public record. I, I don't know how many times I can say that. It, it, it says it right there. I mean, do you want me to put this up in front of the fire station so people can?
So, 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 so I will address the same issue that you raised. We receive our packets prior to, um, taking a vote and this item was held. Did you at any times go to the town clerk and say, "I have a concern about Mrs. Joyce being appointed as an election worker"?
Why would I go to the town clerk? It's an agenda item.
Because she's the one that handles it. If you had, if, if you had a question about an incident that happened and observed by a campaign worker for your campaign, a campaign worker for your campaign.
Well, here's the simple answer to your question. Because there have been other times that I've given you information that I found out in regard to agenda items and your response every single time has been, "It's on the agenda, it's going to be discussed." What's the point?
Um, I'm not sure that I follow that or it needs to be addressed.
Your memory is conveniently absent when it needs to be.
Oh, Mr. Simonian, really?
Let's move on.
Mrs. Joyce, did you have, Ellen, did you want to address anything else regarding the, the meeting where you acknowledged that Mrs. Joyce improperly handled a ballot?
I never acknowledged that she improperly handled a ballot.
Okay. Could you, could you?
She received sealed ballots that were opened. Every clerk in every precinct received sealed ballots that were opened. It just happened that this one was white. The only thing is you're calling it, or it's being referred to as improper. But when I called the Secretary of State's office because I wasn't sure what to do with it, legal counsel for elections said, "Count it. It's what the voter voted. You have to give them the opportunity to vote and use that ballot. It may not be the color that's usual, but if it's in that sealed ballot, then you count
Thank you. Before we move on, is there, um, I'm going to give Mrs. Joyce an opportunity. She said she wanted to make a, a statement. Is there anything for, any further action that this board needs to take in regards to an, um, you know, a complaint or charge brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual?
Madam Chair, I think if you let the employee conclude with her remark and then the board can determine what to do with the information as received.
Okay.
I can just ask a question of the clerk before we do that.
Mr. Carpenter.
Mrs. Gabri, during the 2013 election, you mentioned Mr. Hammond was an observer.
Yes.
Did anybody, uh, file a complaint with you or with the Secretary of State's office at that time?
Well, he brought it to my attention, so if you want to say that was filing a complaint. But, so did, um, Ms. Joyce. So that I was aware of what had happened and that's why I called the Secretary of State's office because it is a little unusual. I wasn't exactly sure what to do. Do you count it? Do you not count her? I mean, the whole reason we have elections is so that people can vote. You know, I didn't want to deny a vote or the right to vote, or their vote, yeah.
Did Mr. Hammond, you notified him of that, of what the Secretary of State said?
Yes, he was standing there. Yes, when I called.
Okay.
Do board members have anything else?
Yep, thank you.
Mrs. Joyce, did you, Ellen, did you have anything else?
No, I think I missed that thing.
And, um, Mrs. Jacobson, did you have anything else?
Uh, through the chair, I don't have anything to add if at any point and would like, um, if you want to reference emails you asked me to get, I do have that.
Okay.
Um, with regard to the executive session.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Joyce. Okay. Um, I've spent my adult life, you know, involved in elections and the integrity of elections and, and, you know, this having happened to me, I actually was watching the meeting myself when it happened and it was extremely disturbing. Um, but I thank you, thank you for this open session and I just want to share a few words. This is an unfortunate situation. I am thankful for the investigations committee's efforts to resolve this matter regarding the absentee voter's use of an irregular ballot at the May 2013 town election. I'm thankful for the open and public forum nature. I am appreciative, along with all of you, to have heard the results of the committee's findings. Thank you. Attorney Hennington?
I have nothing.
Is there any further, do board members have anything else? Is there any further action that this board needs to take?
I think it would be just up to the board whether to file the report, take action on the report, dismiss the report, however the board would like to proceed.
Mr. Carpenter?
I just want to take a minute and, and thank everybody involved with, with the report. And while I'm, I'm not entirely satisfied with how the investigation was conducted, I understand that this was a Board of Registrar decision. I do just want to make the point that Mrs. Joyce at no time made a decision independent of the town clerk. The town clerk clearly takes responsibility in the report. It was brought to her attention by several people, including representatives from one campaign and apparently none of the campaigns filed any complaint of this election to the registrars or to the town clerk or to the stake. So Mrs. Joyce did not improperly handle a ballot. She followed accepted protocol in how to do something and, you know, it's unfortunate that we, we get to this because we don't talk to each other. We're all elected officials, we can all talk to each other, we can talk to any official of the town. We just need to pick up the phone and ask and if we're not satisfied, we can, we can go from there. But, you know, where there's an absence of any action by any of the campaigns in that 2013 election, it appears to me as, as a unbiased person that the campaigns were satisfied. Um, I don't believe we had, uh, any recounts in that election because I would have had to have appeared in June. So people were satisfied with the election. And it, and I've said it before, the town clerk exercised the judgment that she always uses. If she doesn't know, she, she reaches out and she talks to other professionals and she gets an answer. She doesn't just fly by the seat of her pants. She makes the effort to get an answer, which apparently was satisfactory at the time to those involved with the incident. So it's unfortunate that we find ourselves here and, uh, you know, I, I hope that in the future we talk to each other rather than investigate each other and that would be my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Did you want to add anything else? Okay. So does this board wish to take any action on the report? Mr. Holstrom?
I make a motion that, uh, we record these reports with the minutes of the meeting and, uh, just, it's the only record we should see.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes so voted? Thank you, Mrs. Joyce, for coming in. Thank you, Attorney Hennington. Mrs. Jacobson, um, Mr. Simonian just raised an issue as to the, um, the email. Do you want to address that now?
Uh, through the chair, whatever. Through the chair, that's fine. This, uh, just with regard to, uh, when the meeting started at 6:30, there was discussion regarding an email and what decision and how the decision was made to go into executive session. Uh, again, I just, I, I want to read the email that we were all discussing prior to that, of which I was copied on. It was from the Chairman of the Board, Doreen Goodrich, to Steve Simonian, Selectman. Uh, "Hi Steve, the town manager has informed me that the investigation into the alleged incident with the election worker in the May 2013 election that you raised, which the Board of Selectmen subsequently voted to have the town manager investigate, is now complete." I'm sorry, not complete, is complete. While I have not seen the report, the town manager said it is a fact-based report by the Board of Registrars and the town clerk declaring, detailing the process for absentee ballots and the handling of those ballots during the May 2013 election. The town manager needs to provide the report to the Board of Selectmen. In order to determine whether the report should go on the regular board agenda or executive session, I need to know whether it is your intention to discuss Patricia Joyce, the election worker you publicly named at a board meeting, in which you discuss the alleged election incident and the alleged allegations made against Ms. Joyce during the discussion of the report provided by the town manager at the Board of Selectmen meeting. If you plan to discuss Mrs. Joyce and her alleged role in the May 2013 election, then the report regarding the incident needs to be brought into the board in executive session as the board will be discussing, quote, "the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline of, or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual," quote. If you do not intend to discuss Mrs. Joyce, then the report will be placed on a board agenda as a regular item for open session. If it is placed on the regular meeting agenda, the discussion can only be about the report, not any specific election worker, who are the municipal employees under the law. Please let me know your intentions so I can determine whether to schedule an executive session for this report, which will require certain notifications to Mrs. Joyce under the open meeting law. Thank you in advance for your response." That was followed by, uh, an email from Mr. Simonian to me. Uh, "Good evening, Julie. Doreen has brought to my attention the fact that some sort of report has been done regarding the 2013 election issue that was raised. I expect that a copy of the report will be placed in my folder in the Selectmen's building prior to any public meeting on this report. Each member of the board should have the opportunity to read and digest this report prior to any public discussion. I will not partake in any, uh, type of public discussion on this topic where a discussion takes place with only minutes to review the information. Further, I will also not make any commitment as to whether or not I make any reference to Mrs. Joyce prior to having the opportunity to read this report. Lastly, I have sent an email to Doreen informing her that I will not speak to her regarding a matter which could potentially be a conflict of interest for her. She has refused to recuse herself from a matter in which a close personal friend, by her own public admission of hers, has a financial gain. Please let me know when the report is available for me to pick up for review." That then led to, uh, the response, uh, "Good morning, Steve. The report that has been prepared," uh, this is from me to Mr. Simonian, "The report that has been prepared was done in response to the Board of Selectmen's vote to investigate the alleged election incident and impropriety that took place during the May 2013 elections. If Ms. Joyce, as a municipal employee, was not going to be discussed, referenced, or mentioned at all, then the report could have been placed on the board agenda and included in the board packet distributed on Friday. However, since you've responded that you will not make any commitment as to whether or not you will make any reference to Ms. Joyce prior to reading the report, we have to take up the report and the discussion of the report in executive session to protect the rights of the employee since a member or members of the board may discuss the reputation and character of an individual while complaints against an employee under the open meeting law exemption number one. Therefore, the town's standard practice, uh, the report cannot be distributed to members in advance of that executive session. The report will be provided to board members while in executive session and collected at the end of that session. The town will follow proper notification procedures to Ms. Joyce per the open meeting law." So those, um, that was the string of emails. There were a couple of others that, unless you need me to, um, actually, I, I should add, just to finish it, uh, Mr. Simonian wrote back to me, um, "I'm a bit confused here. Can you please clarify some things in your response? It appears the report was conducted by a public body and it contains no reference to any individual. If I am correct, then I do not understand what it is that prevents us from being a public document that can be publicly disseminated and discussed. If an individual were to submit a FOIA for this, please tell me what would prevent the town from honoring that request. It further appears your position is this is an executive session item because of what someone might say. Am I correctly understanding that? Please, uh, tell me under what specific reason you have determined that this is a matter to be discussed out of the public eye." And, um, my response to that was, "Steve, due to the fact that in August, Ms. Joyce's name was publicly stated by you at a Board of Selectmen's meeting to have been involved in an alleged May 2013 election impropriety, Town Council and Labor Council have both advised that the town afford Ms. Joyce all rights as a public employee under mass general laws regarding the complaint or charges made by you against her. Notice has been provided to Ms. Joyce that such complaint or charges against her will be discussed on Monday evening in executive session. Ms. Joyce has the right to have this discussion in open session." So that is what brought us from, uh, to the point where we are tonight and I don't think we need to discuss it anymore, but it was questioned as to what was said in the emails and what information was provided, so.
Mr. Simonian.
Yeah, so it's pretty clear. Um, there was nothing in the report. There was no mention of any name in this report, no reason for executive session. As far as I'm concerned, this is nothing more than just wanting to suppress information. What, what am I going to do? I, I, I wonder if there's ever been any other board member sitting up here who's ever been asked, "What are your intentions before we decide if we're going to put this on the agenda or not?"
I'll state again, it was to protect the rights of the town employee based on advice from Town Council. Mr. Simonian, in your email, you stated that you would not, I, I don't want to misquote him.
Absolutely. Listen, it, again, it's very clear what you can and cannot. And you can, and you can fall back on Mr. Hennington, Mr. Moskis, all you want, but when I spoke to the Attorney General's office, they made it very clear. If we held that executive session, the only people here who could have a complaint filed against them are the five of us. Not the town manager, she's off the hook, not Mr. Hennington, not Mr. Moskis. Hey, we just gave them advice. They're the ones who decided to go into executive session. Oh yeah, by the way, there's no names in there, so there's no reason for it not to be a public document. Five people would have been on the hook to have a complaint filed against them if we had gone into executive session with this report the way that it was written. There were no names in here. There was no information that any single one of you shouldn't have been able to walk into the town hall, submit a Freedom of Information Act, and get a copy of this report two weeks ago.
That was, it was not a public document at that point.
It absolutely is. It was a public body investigating. There was nothing in there that doesn't make that, that needed to be protected, nothing.
Mr. Holstrom?
I believe this discussion has gone on long enough.
Absolutely.
And I will make the motion that we move on with the agenda in front of us and I will second it.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes so voted?
Madam Chair, can I ask for a five-minute recess?
Um, I'll entertain a motion for a three-minute recess.
I'll do a three-minute then. I promise I'll be back in three minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess till two minutes of eight. We're in recess till two minutes of eight.
I'd like to call the February 9th meeting of the Board of Selectmen back in order. The next item we have is public comment. There was no one signed up. Next, after that, we have public hearings. We have a 7:05 hearing for Chili's Grill and Bar located at 826 Southbridge Street for an alleged liquor license violation. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Still moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is open. Is there a representative from Chili's? If you could come up to the microphone, please? If you can first just give your name for the record.
Chris Parker.
Chris Parker, so, and who's with you?
Patrick McClewen.
Okay. Is there anyone else from Chili's who's expected to speak on this tonight? So is anyone who's expected to give testimony for this hearing, please rise? Raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
So the first question I have for you is regarding the notice. You should have received a notice as a license holder dated January 13th that your establishment allegedly sold alcohol to a minor. Do you have any issues with the notice?
No, I don't.
Next, we'll hear testimony from the Police Department. Chief Lucas, if you could, I guess I'll recognize Sergeant Mills then.
Thank you.
Sergeant Mills.
In the interest of time.
For the record.
Good evening, members of board, Madam Chair. On the 12th of November, by prior agreement, we had conducted or were going to conduct some underage alcohol compliance checks. They were posted on the Public Police Department Twitter account and on a local online news outlet. Met with the operative, made sure he didn't have any fake ID or anything. He was provided with all the monies for the operation by me directly. He was driven to all the locations by me, and he was observed walking in and out in the actual restaurants. He was observed by another police officer who was prepositioned in those restaurants.
Could I just ask you to move your mic a little bit closer or to, whoops, that didn't work out.
This was broken the last time I was here, so.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I just want to make sure the license holders can hear you.
I'm sorry. Anyways, at approximately 4:43 in the afternoon, I dropped him off at Chili's. He went to the bar area where he was observed by one of the other detectives in the bar. He ordered a Bud Light draft. He was served that Bud Light draft. The detective actually took a picture of the bartender that sold it to him. He left, came out of the restaurant. I have the receipt from that, and at that point, I drove him to the next location. I know that Chili's was informed by the Chief of Police directly and that they took immediate action against the employee that sold the alcohol.
As the license holder, or representative, do you have any questions regarding the comments that Sergeant Mills just made?
No, I don't.
In the procedure? So would you like to make a statement at this point?
The officer came the next morning. I explained, he showed me the video. We knew the bartender. The bartender had actually carded the person, but he didn't look at the date, so he broke our policy. It is Chili's policy that if you don't card people and serve someone underage, you lose your job, and he was terminated that day.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else you want to add?
We're pretty strict as far as our training policy. Everybody that works in the restaurant is serve-safe certified before they start serving. So, and when we teach the course, we let them know the same thing. If you get caught serving someone that's underage or does not have an ID, we're going to let you go.
So just for the record, you said serve-safe. You're referring to tips, tip certification?
That's like a tip certification, serve-safe and tips are the same thing.
Serve-safe is the food and tips is the alcohol.
Serve-safe is part of the food program.
Do you have any questions for the license holder?
I don't.
Okay. Do members of the board have questions for the license holder? The members of the board have questions for Sergeant Mills? Did you want to make a statement before we close the hearing and make a finding?
I don't think I do. Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So the next action the board would need to make a determination as to whether the license holder had a violation of the terms of their license, or whether they did or did not. Is there a motion regarding whether the license holder violated the terms of their license?
I move that there was a violation of the, of the light, business license.
Okay, and could you include the date of that, please?
Yep, sorry about that.
It's November 12th.
November 12th, 2015.
13, 14, sorry. It's all down to 2013 stuff.
November 12th, 2014.
Correct.
All right, sorry.
So the motion has been made that the license holder has been found in violation of their license on November 12th, 2014, by serving alcohol to a minor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the board's policy and a penalty after finding that the license holder was in violation of their license? Mr. Simonean?
I just have a question before we, in the past, we've had information, or, I didn't see anything in here, so I guess I have to go on the belief that this is a first?
Yes, and I actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. I generally ask the chief if he has a recommendation regarding the violation and the.
That would be corrected. It is their first offense. I would recommend a one-day suspension sometime during the week between Monday and Thursday, with the pleasure of the board, Liz.
I'll make the motion to, as we've done in the past, for a first violation, and also the fact that immediate action was taken, and it seems, you know, pretty serious, and you already have policies in place, training, so, I mean, that's, you know, unfortunately, one slip past the goalie, I guess, and is what it is, but, and since the chief has also recommended a one-day suspension, I don't know what their normal business hours are, days of operation, is it?
It's 11 to 11.
Seven days a week, or?
On the weekends, it's till midnight.
So, on a.
If I can ask the license holder, do you, is there one day of the week that's, where this is your first violation? Is there one day of the week, Monday through Thursday, that is less busy? And are there any specific days that you're aware of that you have an event that, you know, would prove a hardship to suspend your license?
Tuesday is probably the easiest day for us.
So today is Tuesday, so next Tuesday, which would be, I've lost track of all the dates with all the snowshoveling. Seventeenth, Tuesday.
Would it possibly make it the following Tuesday just because of school vacation? That's usually a busy week for us.
I don't have a problem. Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, would be the day of this license suspension. I move that we make it that Tuesday, February 24th.
Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So you'll receive notification that your license will be suspended for that one day. It doesn't prohibit you from operating your business just from serving alcohol, and you will need to post it somewhere that, you know, your license has been suspended for the one day.
Okay.
All righty, and thank you for the quick action you took.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a alleged liquor license violation hearing for Mass Discount Liquors, 844 Southbridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is the license holder here? If you could go up to the microphone, anyone who's going to speak? You're not going to speak? You should be sworn in case you feel you have to say something. Give your name for the record, please.
My name is Dilip Bhavasar.
I'm Sichin Bhavasar.
Okay, and could you please, well, they're already standing, please stand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. So you received notification regarding the alleged violation on your license? Do you have any issues with the notification that you received?
No.
Okay. Sergeant Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, on November 12th, 2014, using the same guidelines and the same underage operative, the, it was actually the next stop at approximately 4:50 in the afternoon. The minor entered Mass Discount Liquors located at 844 Southbridge Street, went to the cooler area, selected a six-pack of Bud Light bottled beer, approached the counter and paid $7.39 for it, and he was served by a gentleman he described as a white male with gray hair and a beard. Took the alcohol with us, and the chief again notified the following day, notified the owners. I actually spoke to one of the owners on the phone, and he admitted to me that, you know, a mistake was made and that they were going to take the actions needed to, you know, to address that. I don't know what actions they took, but he ensured me that they would take some action to ensure it didn't happen again. And just as a side note, we did conduct compliance about a month later, and every outlet in town passed, including the two that were here tonight.
Great, thank you. So do you have any questions for the police officer regarding the statements he just made?
No.
Okay. Would you like to make a statement regarding the alleged violation?
Not on the violation itself, but the steps that we have taken, I can perhaps comment on that.
Okay.
So, you know, it's very unfortunate that this did happen, and in fact, it also happened through one of the most trusted employees that we have, is a retired school teacher, very responsible, but it did happen. So we, you know, we tried to analyze, tried to understand what is happening, why, despite being the policy that everybody tries to adhere to and remains alert, but it did slip through. So it turns out, what I'm going to tell here is perhaps true of all these small neighborhood liquor stores, where, you know, we are a single cash register, single cashier operator, and our customers are neighborhood clients, residents, whom we see every, pretty much every day, every other day, every week. And I think that is what sets in the complacency. And I've been thinking how to, you know, get out of that complacency. And, you know, I've been struggling. The step that we have done now is we have declared, we have put up notices that not only the employees know, but we also let our customers know that it is our policy to not to sell to underage customers, and it is our policy to card everybody. And, you know, if somebody is not carded, that's only because he, this client, customer was seen yesterday, day before yesterday, or, you know, on a very regular basis, and personally verified a few times that the person is of legal age. I think we do stand different than the grocery stores and the gas stations, where there are multiple cashiers and very large number of customers, where they do card everybody every single time. I don't know if we can afford to do that. I'm still battling, you know, unless the state made the law that thou shall not sell unless a legal proof is presented every single time. So I don't know, this is where we stand, but we have, we are sticking with our employee because we know that he's a responsible person, and it would not happen again. And we have basically taken the lesson from here and moving forward.
Sergeant Mills, do you have any questions for the license holder?
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay. To board members, Mr. Simonean?
Yes, please, maybe. I just want to make sure that I understood your statement because, and please correct me if I'm wrong. It seemed like you started out apologetic for the fact that it happened, and somehow came around to the conclusion that because of the nature of your operation, it's not your fault. And I'm really, 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 and this is why I'm saying, I want to make sure that I completely understand, because, to be completely honest with you, I'm really bothered by the statement that you made regarding the law and it being required every single time. The law, and the chief is here, so chief, please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the law says everyone should be carded, or that ID must be presented to purchase alcohol, something to that effect. I don't know the exact, but I'm bothered by the fact that it seems like you kind of came around to making an excuse for why this happened, and that just, to me, says it could easily happen again. So is there any part of what I just said, am I misunderstanding your statement? Because it seems to me that's what you concluded.
Let me, I think I may have come out incorrect.
Okay.
So policy is to sell legal age and card everybody. That's the policy. What I was explaining was I was trying to understand why this happens, and then, you know, and then complacency is what I was able to track down as the reason.
Okay.
So alert on our part would be how to prevent complacency to set in, and I think these things are very valuable. I just wish that they could be less stinging, and that could be more constructive. Maybe we could, I'm thinking aloud here, you know, maybe we could do our own private stint and see if the policy is being followed or not.
Mr. Simonean?
All right, just to follow up, and I'm glad that you clarified that to a degree. So now, I think what you're, what you're saying is you're struggling to understand how it happened and possibly struggling with a way to prevent it from happening again. Yes. And if that's the case, I mean, it's your business, and I, your name is on the license. You, it is your responsibility. Now, I'm not an expert, so again, the chief, Sergeant Mills, are here. It seems to me that there's got to be something out there. I know there's all kinds of educational things with the ABC that may offer you some guidance, possibly some recommendations from the chief, I don't know. But it is your business, and there is only one person whose name is on that license, and there is only one person who came before this board and asked for that license to be approved. So ultimately, the responsibility does fall on you. And it should scare you that it happened. I mean, who knows? The next time, if, God forbid, there is a next time, you know, it could be a 16-year-old kid drinking a six-pack of beer, driving through town, and that's certainly, you know, cause for me, anyone being harmed in any way, shape, or form. So if that's the case, I, it's on you to get whatever guidance you need to fulfill that license, and make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I would ask you to find out, whatever it is you need to do, whoever it is you need to talk to or get guidance from, if you're struggling with that, to please make sure that does not happen in our community.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I too wanted to follow up on your statement. So I too wanted to follow up on your statement, just to be clear for the record, because I was troubled by the way it came out. What it appeared to be is that you stated that it was difficult, too difficult, to card everyone. So that reference was made in trying to figure out what was happening in the complacency, and the result of your own internal investigation was the response to the complacency was it's too hard to card everyone?
No, that's not, it's not come out that way, and that's not what I meant. What I meant was because complacency sets in, because a cashier is seeing the same customer again and again, and that's where, you know, sometimes they start skipping. And that's what we need to work on to prevent.
Okay. And you might want to put on your door as you're walking in, maybe on one of the beer coolers in the back, maybe at the register, please have your ID ready. And they have it in their hand, and they're ready. But I know that you've been before us before, I know that you haven't had a violation in the last couple of years, but you just need to make sure that you're checking the ID of all of your customers. And I think it's wonderful that you have, you know, a neighborhood business and you have repeat customers, but you don't have the luxury of having any more mistakes.
Yes.
Do board members have any, Mr. Simoni?
I'm sorry, sorry if this sounds like impiling on, but you brought up the, you made the statement that complacency sets in. And I'm not going to disagree with you, but there's a difference between complacency being, I wrote two plus two equals five on my math test, that's minus two. Complacency in not carding someone, that shouldn't be acceptable in any way, shape, or form. If that's your policy, that everyone is ID'd, then everyone should be ID'd, and every single one of your employees should be aware of that policy. And, you know, the folks who are just here, some people may think it's harsh, one mess up and you're gone. I applaud that, because that leaves no room for doubt as to what will happen, and tells every single employee how serious they are about protecting their license, protecting their business, and overall, protecting the community that they do business in.
Do board members have anything else? Did you want to say anything else before we close the hearing?
No.
Yes, chief.
I just want to make sure that this doesn't happen again, and I want to make sure they're perfectly clear. Should this happen again, so complacency is not an issue in the future, I'm going to direct Sergeant Mills, the next time he conducts an alcohol compliance check, if you fail, he is to stop doing the check, he is to go behind the counter and arrest the person who sold alcohol to a minor. And you can pass that message on to all of your employees, and maybe they won't be complacent. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Good.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding whether or not the license holder has been found in violation of their license by serving alcohol to a minor on November?
12th.
12th, 2014.
A move that, as admitted to by the license holder, a violation did occur on November 12th, 2014.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Chief, they've been found in violation of their license, do you have a recommendation?
I don't believe they had a violation last year, I believe they had one prior to that, under the board's policy, I believe it would be totally up to you as to whether or not it counted as a first offense, because they were not consecutive offenses. However, I would recommend a two-day suspension of their license. The days to be determined by the board.
Do we have the dates as to the previous violation?
The last one was September 24th, 2012.
The?
One-day suspension.
September 24th, 2012. So the last violation of this license holder was September 24th, 2012. They've been found in violation of their license November 12th, 2014. The chief is recommending a two-day suspension, which goes outside of our guidelines a little bit, but chief, would you recommend a weekday, two-day suspension?
Yes.
Okay. The chief is recommending Monday through Thursday, a two-day suspension.
I make a motion, we follow along with the chief's recommendation, go with a two-day suspension, to be...
Would that be the week after, the same as Chili's?
Yes. I would say two consecutive days, the 23rd, 24th, or the 24th, 25th.
That would be a Tuesday and a Wednesday?
I'll second for discussion.
I'm sorry?
I'll second for discussion.
Tuesday, so it would have to be the 24th and 25th, if you want to do a Tuesday, Wednesday.
24th and 25th, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday is the 24th and 25th, sorry. Okay, so we have a motion to suspend the 24th and the 25th, seconded for discussion. Mr. Simoni, did you have something?
Just a question to the chief regarding his recommendation. You just made a pretty strong statement about a next violation, and I know how serious you take this, you and I have talked about this in the past. And I, I'm wondering why two and not three. I know we don't have a policy that says three, but in my opinion, it is a second violation, some of the comments that were made, I'm kind of bothered by it, it seems like you were too. And I, I don't know, I just think maybe it's time to send a message before.
It's totally up to the board's discretion. Like you said, we don't have a three-day suspension. However, there was not a violation last year, it was the year before. I try to be firm but fair, and, you know, you people, the licensing authority, you have the ultimate say.
No, I appreciate your input, I mean, you're the chief in this community, and you deal with it every day, so I, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, like Will said, we don't have a three-day policy, but, so I guess, my question is, you wouldn't have a problem with?
You don't have to adopt my recommendation, you could go significantly above that, if that's how you so choose.
No, I just wanted to ask for follow-up based on the statement you made, but thank you. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, I just want to be clear that any action that this board takes relative to the license, and action that you take, would fall into mass general law if you were to make an arrest. That has nothing to do with us as a licensing authority, that's your?
Yeah, I have different options that are available to me when we do these. I can bring the complaint before you, as I always have, I could bring it before the ABCC in Boston. We can summons the person into court and charge them criminally, or, should a violation happen again, we have the option of arresting the person that actually sold the alcohol. So it's wide and varied as to what the options are that we can follow.
So I just want to make sure that you're clear on the chief's statement. You know, no matter what action that this board takes, the chief has said publicly that if you serve alcohol to a minor, and he becomes aware of that, he will immediately go in and arrest, under mass general law, the person who sold to the minor. And that's outside of any action that this board may take, his rights as the chief of police under the law.
Yes, they're absolutely separate and distinct, yes.
Separate, okay. Is there any further discussion on this? So we have a motion for the Tuesday and Wednesday?
24th and 25th.
25th? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I support the motion, but I'd just like to, I'd just like to make one follow-up.
Okay, so let me just finish, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Mr. Simoni?
I just want to be clear, because I want to echo pretty much what the chief said. The seriousness that he addressed you with, make no mistake, if a third violation happens while I sit on this board, my recommendation to my fellow members and colleagues on this board will be to revoke the license. There won't be any question in my mind if a third violation does occur. I, I've said it before, I hate to be redundant, but there are hundreds of kids in this town that I know who are freshmen and sophomores in high school, and despite, whatever you do as a parent, there are still, people do stupid things, kids make mistakes. And I would just hope that if any of those kids that I've known from coaching, from school functions, football, whatever it is, ever walked into your store, you'd say, absolutely not. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, thank you, Sergeant Mills.
Oh, I'm sorry, before you go, last time, last time we went through this, there was a little bit of a question about procedure, and I just wanted to say, the information that you gave us tonight, and it, similar to the comments I made to the town clerk, I think it's phenomenal, the detail that you gave us tonight, and kind of addressed some, thank you so much for leaving No Doubt, and... I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Bye. So just real quickly, under correspondence, we had a license holder who had put in an application, and I had asked Patsy to contact the license holder, just to be sure that they were withdrawing, and so we have a letter from Patsy, "Please be advised that the board of selectmen, that Andrew Mastertataro called me on Monday, January 12th, and informed me that he was withdrawing his application for motor vehicle class two license at 113 Washington Street. The check for the license fee was returned to him, so that there'll be no further action on that item, it's off of our agenda," and that's clear. Dr. Brunel? Are you with Dr. Brunel? Please, Dr. Brunel, please join us.
Oh, sure, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Town Manager Jacobson and Mrs. Kwiatowski. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you on behalf of the school committee to share two informational items, and to at least seek your preliminary support of them. I'd be happy to return once the warrant articles for the, warrant opens for the March 24th special town meeting. So the first item, this is my third time before you, as you know, we applied through the Mass School Building Authority's Accelerated Repair Program to have the roofs replaced at the current Auburn Middle School and Bryn Mawr School, as well as the boiler at the current Auburn Middle School. At the January 14th meeting, they did vote in favor of that. So we have 90 days from the January 14th date, which makes it April 14th, to seek approval for the full authorization. Now, as noted in my memo to you, and these are based on estimates that were submitted to MSBA, with a reimbursement rate from MSBA of 54.16%, that this will save the town up to $1.7 million. Making this news even better is the fact that through your support, in-town meeting support, of reappropriation of previously approved CIP funds, this will not require any additional funds or support from the town. We will be seeking, at the March 24th meeting, three additional transfers, namely from the Paketog School as well as Central Office. Those total $235,300. And actually, another kudo to the town, one of those savings that we're going to look to repurpose is the result of the town being designated as a green community. So we've realized some significant savings, both in our HVAC, and we're going to delay some work at Central Office. So that is one piece of news, and when the warrant opens, I will come before you and seek your support for that full authorization. The second item I wanted to make you aware of, we learned about this back in the fall. Each year, as you've seen in our budgets that have come before you, we always bring forward as many offsets as possible. Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement program, much like Medicaid, so the school department spends the money in one fiscal year, and these are for students who have significant needs, and we could pay, the district could pay anywhere from $35,000 up to $200,000 plus to educate students. It's primarily those students who we cannot educate in-house, who are out in out-of-district placements. So we always reserve as much of that money to offset, to reduce the impact to the operating, and thus the taxpayers of Auburn. What we learned this fall is, there is a requirement that in any fiscal year, you cannot carry forward any amount higher than the amount that you received in the previous fiscal year. Unbeknownst to us, when we got this notification from the Department of Revenue, what they stated was that we had carried forward an additional $144,519.81 beyond what we should have carried forward. It was always and still is our intention to use those monies to offset the operating budget, and to pay for extraordinary costs for some of our most challenged students. What we were notified by the Department of Revenue, Mr. Kasnovich has been aware and in support of this, as is Town Manager Jacobson, is this money would need to go into the general fund, and we would then need to seek support through town meeting to have it transferred back to the school department. If you recall, all of Medicaid reimbursement money, and we've asked over the past couple of years for $124,000, and has always been supported by town meeting, we pay for that support for students in one year, it goes into the general fund when it gets deposited, and then we seek transfer. So I'm here to, here to tell you both pieces of that information, answer any questions that you may have, and to let you know that I'll be before you with warrant articles that have actually gone before school committee, and receive the unanimous support.
Great, thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you see that overage going up, going down, from year to year? Does it, you know, does it spike at one point and then drop off in another year?
So now that we are aware of this requirement, that you can't carry forward more than the amount in Circuit Breaker, I assume you're referring to in any fiscal year? So we will make certain that we don't ever have an overage again. It was really unbeknownst, and when Mr. Kasnovich first called me about it this fall, and we had a conversation, and he was unaware of it, I was unaware of it, our previous business manager was too. But ultimately, I take responsibility for the fact that we had that there. I can tell you with great confidence that the money was always intended only to lower the operating budget and to support our most challenged students. So this, I don't anticipate this issue will ever come before you or town meeting again, quite honestly, at least not in my tenure.
Thank you.
Mr. Kabanta?
Just a quick question. In the note to the chair, you mentioned something in the facilities grant about eligible owners or construction contingency expenditures. Can you give me an example of what those might be?
So this is, much like with the current Auburn Middle School project, when we put together the anticipated budget for the roof replacements and the boiler, we need to set aside, it's basically a percentage, it's usually between 1 and 4% that's set aside for some unanticipated costs and contingencies. And that's why you see the variability of what the town could save, you know, whether it's the 1.6 or 1.7. Now, what we're hoping is that the overall cost for these three projects is even lower than we anticipate. If that's the case, then it won't cost the town even that much money through our CIP monies, but it's really a contingency for unanticipated costs that may come up.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is there anything else? So there's no action required?
There's no action, I just wanted to make you aware of those. Exactly.
Okay.
Good news.
It is good news, it is excellent news, thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
Thanks so much, thank you for waiting. I'll entertain a motion to move up, because we have people here. Agenda item 8B to be followed by agenda item 8C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, through the chair. The first item is item 8B, and this is a municipal facility improvement plan. The board, as part of their goals that they had given me back in, I believe, March of 2014 for the year, was to come up with a prioritized list of major building needs that we have in all of our municipal slash non-school buildings, with a plan over a five-year period to include what those repairs or improvements are that are needed, what the potential cost is of those improvements, and potentially how we can finance those improvements. The other part of that goal was to report on major projects completed since April of 2014. So the report that you have before you does that, and also includes projects that have been completed since 2011, when the reorganization went into effect. And the reason I did that is, in several cases, especially at recent Finance Committee meetings, questions had come up as to what improvements had been made to a couple of specific facilities. So, I wanted to just get all the information out there, since the reorganization plan and the DPW went into effect. As you can see from this plan, the buildings that we looked at were the Town Hall, the Marion Building, the Department of Public Works facilities, fire headquarters on Auburn Street, the West Street Fire Station, the Police Station, the Auburn Public Library, the Senior Center, Camp Gleason, Parks, our parks, our cemetery, 21 Pheasant Court, which is owned by the town, sitting on land that the Housing Authority owns, but the building's owned by the town, and the lease is for the Auburn Youth and Family Services. But it is our building. And 41 South Street, which again is owned by the town, and it is utilized by the Auburn Historical Museum. So, based on that, you'll see separate spreadsheets in this report. The first spreadsheet are major repairs and improvements that were undertaken on municipal facilities since 2011. And the second spreadsheet is the planned improvements to the facilities that qualify under capital improvements, under the CIP plan, which currently are, any projects that have a cost of $5,000 or above. The last sheet are for projected improvements to municipal facilities that don't meet the criteria for inclusion on the CIP plan, which we believe still need to be done, and for which we've come up with several financing strategies to potentially fund these over the next five years. We estimated the costs where possible, and I want to give a lot of credit, actually, to each of the department heads, all of whom are here tonight who worked on this report. Any department head that had a facility that was under their jurisdiction knows their building best, and for the last several months, we began last spring, looked at their buildings, tried to make a determination as to what needed to be done, what had been done, and what the potential cost would be. Working with DPW Director Bill Coyle and Civil Engineer Joanna Paquin did a tremendous job at identifying what the potential cost of this would be. And then, based on that, we all sat down with the CFO, Ed Kazanovich, and tried to figure out which fell under CIP eligible, and which were not CIP eligible, and then to come up with a plan for funding that. So, just to summarize, the total CIP programmed cost, meaning it's already on our CIP for these projects, is $793,263. That's already in the five-year CIP that gets updated every year. The total CIP non-programmed cost, meaning that these are items that have been identified by the department heads, and the Facility Management Department, and the Town Engineer, DPW slash, are $1,698,100. So, that's about $1.7 million worth of CIP projects that are not yet on the CIP over a period of time. Some of them can be placed on them, and some of them we're recommending that we look at alternate sources of funding. The non-CIP costs are $96,900. So, the total cost of all the improvements that you have in front of you for this is about, it's $2,588,263. The funding strategies that we've come up with for the implementation of this plan include the CIP list, obviously, for those that are eligible, and a strategy that combines a blend of the newly established capital fund, which, if you recall, the financial policies that were adopted in November of 2012, provided that point, 10% of two and a half, or 0.25% of the total operational budget be set aside for capital projects. So, we are recommending that we consider looking at that fund and saying that 50% of that should go to the building improvements. And on an annual basis, we're putting in about, the first year was $90,000, this year's close to $100,000. So, we could fund both small CIP items, as well as building improvements through that. Clearly, that won't cover all the costs. So, we're also recommending that we look at our free cash over and above the benchmark reserve level that we've established through the town's policies. And when we hit that reserve level, which actually, we believe we've hit it now, this is uncertified, because we're waiting for the next round on the audit, but right now, what we're recommending is that we would take 10% of free cash, once we hit that reserve level that the bond agencies are comfortable with, and apply that toward the repairs of the buildings that are on this list, and prioritize on this list. Now, right now, our reserve levels are at 14.33%, so our total reserves are a little over $8 million, and that is combined unassigned, free cash, and stabilization. However, the bond rating firms, both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, have indicated that the reserve levels they'd like to see are now in 17% to 19%. Our goal, by the financial policies, was 13%, and we have met that goal. But it is not the goal that we need to hit to reach the next level of bond rating, of getting the next upgrade for the bond rate. Communities that are in the next rating level above us have reserves in the 17% to 19% range. So, we're there, where we need to be for our policies, but we're finding that every year we go out to bond, the bonding agencies are making that target that much higher. So, our recommendation is, when we get to a point where we're comfortable with the bond agencies, and they're comfortable, that we could take 10% of that free cash over and above the recommended reserve levels, and apply it toward continual improvements on our, in our properties. And we're also recommending that we look at other things, such as utilizing unassigned fund balance, and if it was a one-time cost, potentially stabilization. There are a lot of different options that we can look at here. I don't want to go over the entire list, but again, the list is here, it's been prioritized by year, meaning, number one, what we have on the CIP list, and what we're able to do for the next several years, based on the CIP, and number two, based on the dire need of the projects and of the repairs that need to be done. And the challenge here was, every building does have things that need to be done. We've done a great job so far addressing a lot of those improvements, but as a town, and DPW and Facility Management have to look at the whole picture. What is it that we, as a town, need to prioritize, not individual buildings? And then, try to design a plan that meets those needs. And I think that this plan has definitely achieved that. I do want to point out that since the Facility Management Department was created, the reorganization was approved in May of 2011, I believe it was June of 2012, Facility Management was created at DPW, and it took a couple of months to get it going. So, since that time, DPW through Facility Management has done projects that are estimated to have saved the towns about $650,000. I also want to mention that in that amount, the Fire Department has also done a lot of improvements on their own in their buildings as well, and that amount is reflected in that savings. So, between the Facility Management and the Fire Department, again, we've saved the towns $650,000 in projects that absolutely had to be done. The most recent example would be the Police Station, where we had to, we went to town meeting, and we got a warrant article for $25,000 to replace the windows, which were falling apart and rotting, and the labor bid on that was $25,000. But we did it through the Department of Public Works Facility Management, and we were able to save on the labor costs. So, the list you have before you, I would tell you, it's a flexible list. This list was completed at the end of, well, probably at the end of November, December, we kept adding to it, and then, in January, we went through and just prioritized everything, and attached the dollar amounts, and that took about two months. But I point that out, because things do happen, and something may have happened two weeks ago that's not going to be on this list. So, I think we all have to recognize that this needs to be a flexible list, that we have to acknowledge that things happen to our buildings, and that if it does, it's going to change the list that you have before you. If something, that's a public safety issue, or something that's going to continue to get even worse, we have to address it right away, even if you may not see it on this list right now. I would also suggest that we have the department heads here this evening to talk about any of the improvements that are on this list. We tried to make it simple for you, we went by building. So, all the improvements that have been done in the last four years are listed here by dollar amount, whether it was done in-house, outsourced, or contracted, the estimated savings, and the cost of the project. And it is, again, that's done by building. So, you can see that, I think we've done a good job maintaining our buildings, but clearly, there are a lot of things that we still need to do, and we need to plan for.
Thank you. Do any of the department heads want, or division heads want to add anything? If you can just recognize your department head and division heads for being here.
Absolutely. We have with us Darlene Coyle, who's the Acting Director of the Department of Development and Inspeccional Services, and we have Bill Coyle, the DPW Director, who's probably been going on 72 hours now since the storm. I don't know if he's gone to sleep yet, but I thank you for coming. Caroline McMaster, who's here from the library, and I can't see behind her, but Mignon Murray would be from the Senior Center. Marian Murphy is here as well, but for the next item, for the treasurer's item on the financial policies, and both chiefs, Chiefs Lucas and Chief Coleman. While I mention the chiefs...
Roger Bellhumer, Emergency Management.
I'm sorry, I can't see. Roger's here.
Chief Bellhumer, Emergency Management.
Hi, Roger, I'm sorry, I can't see in the back row. Roger Bellhumer, our Emergency Management Director, who, again, has been very active in the last 72 hours, we've all, we've all spent a lot of time together and on the phone. So, I want to, I have an item on there later, but while they're all here, I want to just give my heartfelt thanks to them for all the work that they did in the storm. They just did a tremendous job, from DPW to Police, to Fire, to Emergency Management, to Health and Code, Building Inspectors, every department is involved when we have a storm like that. It's incredible, the amount of planning that goes into it, and I truly believe, because we all pull together as a team, and make sure that we have plans and preparations in place, that when the storm actually comes, we're able to manage it. And I would say that we manage it better, if not amongst the top communities in the state. We got one of the highest snowfalls in the state, and we are also one of the first communities to open our schools and open our roads. So, I want to thank everyone for all the work they did. Police and Fire, there is a note in here, and I want to just bring this to the board's attention, that there are a number of repairs that are needed between Police and Fire, public safety facilities, we have three. The Police and Fire stations, the three of them, make up the bulk of the improvements that need to be done here. While there are, there is an extensive list at each of the buildings of smaller items, the bulk of the cost actually comes from Police and Fire. And it's probably around $2 million, which is the estimated cost in today's dollars for some of the improvements. And I would have to say, that doesn't include an issue that arose today at the Police Station with regard to the extent of the snow that we've received, and the fact that the building wasn't properly insulated when it was first built. And because it wasn't insulated, there's a massive ice buildup, and that ice buildup's got to be watched very carefully. If we don't address it, we're going to have a major issue. Again, you know, that became very apparent this morning. So, we are recommending, as a result of this report, that not only do we implement the facility plan that you see here, but we look to begin to address the feasibility of what do we do with our public safety facilities? Do we expand on them? Do we improve on them? Do we combine them? Do we look at something new? Do we look at a combination of the above? But when you're looking at $2 million worth of, I would call them basic improvements to the buildings, and we're not, we don't even know what improvements are going to be needed five, you know, 10 years down the road, this is a five-year plan, I think it's incumbent on us to take a look and say, what should we be doing with these public safety facilities? And there's no easy answer. There are a lot of different options, and I think it might be worth looking at it, given the costs that we're facing.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Julia, it's great to see the improvements that have been made. The report you've given us, it explains pretty much exactly what your plans are. It's one of the things that I had requested, one of the suggestions I had made, is to take a look at all the facilities, because use of the facilities over the years, and I've been part of, we do use them, and they do get worn, and they do have to be repaired, and there has to be some sort of a program to watch over that. The facilities programs, the facilities department now, I see the yellow truck and the construction trailer all over town, all the time, and they're doing, I've seen their work, and it's been phenomenal. Some of the rooms I've seen them work on, I don't recognize after they get through with them, so they have done an excellent job, and saved the town a lot of money. Along with the facilities department, this municipal facility improvement plan, it's not, it's going to be something that's going to be moved around a little at a time, there's going to be priorities, but you also have a financing element to it, so that it's not going to be something that just, yeah, we've got the money, let's go and do it. It's going to be paid attention to, there's going to be priorities, and there's going to be a need. And hopefully, this plan will just continue on, from this point on, because our buildings do have to be maintained, there have to be improvements, there have to be revisions due to the operations. So, all the work that I've seen through the Fire, through the Facilities Department, the work has been just great. It looks like it's going to improve the conditions for the employees, which is always a morale builder, and shows them a sense of pride, and I think that if we continue, this town is just going to continue to move on. So, thank you very much for this report, and it does spell out a lot of what's going on around town. Thank you.
Thanks.
I should also, if I can add, I want to make sure that I give credit to those donated services that we've received also. A lot of these projects have been done because Home Depot, the Boy Scouts, Bay Path, the Sheriff's Office, we've reached out and secured additional help wherever we can, as well as applied for and received grant funding wherever we can. So, we will continue to do that, but there are certain projects that, you know, we know that we are going to have to take on ourselves, and those that we can't take on ourselves, we are going to have to outsource. It is our intention to bring this before the Finance Committee as well. Again, they had, in addition to this board, the Finance Committee had raised similar questions last year, when we were looking at operational budgets, and what could you set aside an operational budget to do some repairs? I believe at that time, it was the Fire Station. So, that would be, our intent would be to bring it forward at that time to the Finance Committee.
Great. Mrs. Monahan?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of what Mr. Holstrom said, and I do appreciate the services that were donated, and the effort that's been put forth to do this. I mean, this, when you talk about, you know, things that are part of the community as a whole, I mean, this is just one of those things that I think everybody can appreciate. So, you know, I thank you all as well, and I guess, you know, the bottom line is, we'll just have to get Police and Fire to stop being so rough on their buildings, but, thank you very much.
Mr. Coyle, did you want to address something?
Thank you. Bill Coyle, DPW Director. Madam Chair, I just wanted to add, as much as this was a lot of work for all the department heads, and there were many, many meetings that we all had with Julie and Ed, and with each other, to go over all the buildings, and it was quite an effort, I think, by everybody. But I think it's, it was an excellent list for us, because it gives us the opportunity through facilities to have a long-range plan. The Facilities Division, Jimmy Boragad has done an excellent job, and Caleb Moody, who's now working as the Building Inspector, has also done an excellent job as well. I think their efforts seen all around town, and their work and their carpentry skills are much appreciated by myself, and I think by others. So, in the past, we've looked at shorter term, maybe six months out, what are we going to work on next? This gives us a list, five years, and potentially, much longer than five years, depending on how long it takes to get to all this, but it also gave us the opportunity to take a close look at all of our buildings. We walk through them all the time, but sometimes you might overlook something that needs to be repaired. We looked at everything right down to outlet covers at the Senior Center. So, I think that there was, I don't think there's too many things that were missed, and in each one of the meetings that we had, we did have, one of us would think of something that needed to be done. So, I think it was a lot of work by all the department heads, and Julie and Ed, so, but I think it's a great plan for us to work on. Not to say that we're going to get all these things done, but it's certainly something that would give us an opportunity, when we're at the Town Hall working, what was on the list, while we're at the Town Hall. And so, I'm very happy that we do have this, because it is something that we can refer to for several years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Mr. Coyle brings up a good point, and I just want to be clear, we did put target fiscal year on this, but Bill's strategy is, if we do have that truck at a building, and they're doing other work, and we can take on some of the other things, and it won't take too much time, we will combine them, even if it's later on the list.
Chief?
Good evening, thank you. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity, just to reiterate the town manager's comments. In terms of the public safety facilities, you know, not only Fire, but I don't think he'll mind, I'll speak for Chiefs Lucas. It, you know, when any municipality, including Auburn, you know, sets out to build a municipal project, you know, 50 years is usually the target goal, you know, we strive to create a building that's going to take us into the future, the next 50 years. And although with construction standards now, we can probably go a little longer than that, but, you know, that was the case in this community 50 years ago. And, you know, I think oftentimes, you know, we sit here, and we talk about numbers, and we talk about buildings that are going to bring us into the future 50 years, and, you know, we maybe don't give much thought that that 50 years is going to show up. know, we maybe don't give much thought that that 50 years is going to show up at some point. And at least as far as the fire stations are concerned, that number is here. The fire station is now over 50 years old. You know, one of the things that I would like, you know, not only the board, but the finance committee and the public to keep in mind, is that, you know, the fire department has had growth in the last 50 years. And we take a tremendous amount of pride in our buildings, both facilities. And, you know, as you can see with the list in front of you, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on in the station by on-duty staff every day, that saves the town thousands of dollars. And some of that is a financial strategy, but most of it is pride and ownership in our facilities. Knowing that it is going to take time, you know, that we're not going to turn, you know, cut a ribbon on a new fire station next year, or even the year after. So understanding that this is going to be a process that's going to take time, I would ask the board that they support the manager's recommendation and concept of forming some sort of a working group to begin to study what is really going to be the future in probably greater than the next 50 years for public safety in the town of Auburn. And there's really a lot of considerations at play when we make this decision, more than I care to talk about this evening. But there's a lot of information, there's a lot of strategy that needs to go into this decision. And my fear is that if we, you know, put this on the back burner for another three to five years, it's just going to be that much more time before we're standing here talking about a real strategy to address, you know, the facilities at public safety. Again, I mean, our buildings are in good shape, because we take a lot of pride in them. And for us, it's more, in some cases, it's more space and operational issues than it is actually building deficiencies. You know, we've outgrown, you know, the building. Headquarters was, you know, was built for a different department than we are operating today. And as far as the West Street facility, you know, I remind people all the time, and every now and then I catch somebody that didn't know this, but, you know, Station 2 on West Street was a former elementary school. And that building was converted in the early 80s. They basically, you know, they blew the brick out of the front, and they put three apparatus bays in, and, you know, minimal work, I believe, and Chief Bell Hummer is here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but town meeting appropriated $80,000 back in the early 80s to convert that to a fire station. So one of the things that the public, that I would like to, you know, just remind them is that we're also working out of a facility that was never designed to be a fire station. We have retrofitted the station, and we've done about the best we can do with it. And, you know, Mr. Holstrom can tell you, as he's served many years with us, you know, at this point, I mean, when you talk about utilizing every inch of space, you know, we've done it, and we've come up with many, many configurations, just trying to get the best. You know, but at the end of the day, our apparatus is parked in an elementary school cafeteria. You know, the tables, the kids' tables, lunch tables are still in the walls. And, you know, the, on the apparatus floor, you can still spin the wheels, you know, the basketball hoops are gone, but all the equipment to lower the basketball hoops from the caf, gym or daisium, you know, or whatever they called it back then, it's all still there. The stage that is in, you know, that was in the auditorium, you know, type kitchen area, the performance stage, is still on our apparatus floor. So these are some of the challenges that we work with on a daily basis in terms of space and in terms of our operation. And we do what firefighters do. We make the best with what we have, and a little Yankee ingenuity, and we make it work. But I would encourage the discussion to start now, to talk about our future. Again, you know, the buildings are over 50 and over 60 years old between the two. And, you know, we haven't even talked about the needs of the police station. And there are many. So I would encourage some sort of a working group. Any of you are welcome to come and tour any of our facilities at any time, and we'd be more than happy to show you around. But I believe we need to start the discussion now, so we can have a well-fought-out plan, a well-fought-out discussion that's going to be able to carry us into the future, well beyond the next 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any follow-up on that?
So I'll just ask if you're looking at the formation of, you know, a working group or an advisory committee, and if so, if you can just, if you, at our next meeting, bring some ideas as to what you envision that group to look like.
Yeah, we can do that. We do want to, when we do move forward on looking at this, we think the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, in addition to Town Administration, we've been trying to look to see if there are any grant funds out there for feasibility studies to get some outside help as well, and trying to see what sources may be out there in the state or federal budget that could potentially offset our costs, which would be a good thing. And I just want to correct something. I said, our total of this plan is about 2.568 million. The police and fire are about 1.4 million of that. And I think by mistake, I said two, but it's about 1.4 million. And again, I don't know if the police chief wants to say anything, but, and if he doesn't, I'll just say that there are some dire needs at the police station that you'll see on here that were not initially on the CIP list. Again, there are things that, we're trying to balance the CIP list and keep the CIP list as low as we can, but sometimes we've got to acknowledge that there are things that need to be fixed. The HVAC system is costing us probably about $20,000 a year in maintenance, as it is now. We're talking about a building that wasn't built to the standards that it should have been built in at the time, or to the size of what was even needed at that time. So now to be using a building for operations that didn't even really fit in there when it was for us to open it, it's a challenge. It doesn't mean we can't look at expansion, but I think there are a number of options we need to look at. We're not saying it has to be new. Maybe new is an option, and maybe expansion is an option. It has to be looked at, though.
Okay, thank you. So I don't think when I asked for motion, I meant to move up items A, B, and C. Is there a motion to move up item 8A, which is the chief's item surplus?
For book.
Thank you.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post a vote.
I just want to thank everyone for coming, too.
Of course, yeah. Chief, the surplus, please.
Yes, I would just ask that you declare that vehicle surplus that's before you this evening. I believe it was car five.
Okay. So the chief is asking that the Board of Selectmen declare Auburn Police Car 5 a surplus. The vehicle's a 2,000 Ford Crown Victoria with 112,000-plus miles on the odometer. He has consulted with the town mechanic, and it was determined that maintenance required to ensure continued and safe operation would not be cost-effective. Are there any questions for the chief regarding this? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we declare Auburn Police Car number five as surplus.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any post a vote? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And then now we are on to item...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
With my apologies, tonight having been rescheduled, and not a normal night for a meeting, I do, I had a previous engagement that I do have to take care of, so I...
Great. Okay, thank you. So we have moved up item 8C, which is the proposed financial policies.
Through the chair. Yeah, Marianne, do you want to come up here, just in case there are any questions? Marianne Murphy, our treasure collector.
Great.
Again, this item is in response to the Board of Selectmen, one of their goals that they had established for me back in March of 2014. And that was for us to review the existing financial policies and make recommendations, if needed, for any new financial policies. So we have the chief financial officer, Ed Kaznovich, again, he planned on being here last night, but when we had to move it tonight, he had a previous commitment that he couldn't change. But we had reviewed all of our financial policies, again, over the year, in concert with Unibank, our financial advisors, and with Marianne, our treasure collector, and the assistant treasure collector, Deb Tarian. Then we determined that the financial policies that were passed in November of 2012 still should remain as is. We didn't see the need to change anything. We looked, I mentioned it earlier, we looked at maybe changing the reserve level from a combined 13%, I think it was eight and five, eight on the free cash and five on stabilization. That's still, it's lower than the bond rating agencies are looking for. However, it changes so frequently, we don't think our financial policies should change every time the bond rating agencies change. We think that our practices could change. So if we leave the policy as it is, we could potentially move toward increasing our reserves to be more in keeping with the level that we want to be at for the bond rating. That being said, we did look to develop two financial policies, and I'll just mention what they are, and I'll let Marianne explain, but one is an overall investment policy, which has been updated since the policy was, I think, first put into place in 2007. Quite a few changes had to be made in concert with Mass General Law. And the second was to develop a brand-new OPEB investment policy, because we did not have OPEB until a couple of years ago. And, you know, we are glad that this is the third year that we've contributed $500,000 to the OPEB, and it is, it's working toward what we need to do. It's certainly not there yet, but we did need a policy in place. And that was done in concert with, well, let me have Marianne explain it.
Okay.
OPEB, we actually consulted Bartholomew, who does all the investments in the OPEB, and
we had them go over our policies to make sure that they were coincided with the current banking laws, in that they agreed with everything. Look at our arbitration clause also, and we had Unibank look at that, our financial advisors.
Mr. Holstrom.
I do have a question. Through the chair, this OPEB has been kind of thorn in everybody's side. It's a requirement, and we are responsible to our retirees, I do understand that. And has the law, I'm hearing different things, if it's been mandated, or if we have to have a certain contribution every year, has the laws changed to make that happen one way or another?
That I would actually have to look into...
Okay.
...to get a better answer, I just want to make sure.
Okay, and then, just to follow up through to Julie, we've been talking $500,000 every year, and it's probably a lot more than most communities are willing or able to do. Is that the plan for Auburn to continue the $500,000 per year, and then the 10%? Can you explain a little bit about the 10% from there?
Sure. Certainly, Ms. Holstrom. The financial policies that were adopted by the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee, in November of 2012, one of which was to contribute $500,000 annually into an OPEB trust fund. So that policy was adopted, and we continue to follow that policy. So until that policy changes, and it has not changed, and nor are we recommending it change, if anything, we would recommend that we contribute more money into the OPEB. The issue is, it's my understanding, right now, it has not been mandated that towns start an OPEB trust fund. However, towns are absolutely legally responsible for the liability of the future retirement plans of their retirees. So if we were to pay annually what the contribution should be to bring us to where we were for the last 40 years, we'd probably be paying, you know, four or five million dollars annually. Our liability over the long term is about, it was recently done on an actual study, I'm going to say it's about $78 million. So to put $500,000 a year toward it is a big step. It's a bigger step than many communities have taken, and that's one of the reasons that our bond rating analysts, that was one of several reasons, the bond rating analysts gave us such strong financial marks, because it is a liability, and if we don't address it now, it will be the problem of somebody in the future. And it will still be a problem in the future if we don't start looking to put even excess money into it. So it's always been the hope of the chief financial officer and myself, that if we ever do reach points where we have excess reserves, we have excess free cash, we have excess in various funds, that we could potentially, at certain points, go to town meeting and ask that they put even more money into the OPEB. But at a minimum, we hope that the board continues to follow the financial policies that they adopted, and continue to contribute the $500,000. It is, in our opinion, the minimum of what we should be doing, and again, in the long term, we should be looking to put in more.
And it won't affect the overall budget, the operating budget of the town? We will do that as we are, as we can, but we are not going to develop a policy saying it's going to be 500,000 plus an additional 5% or 10% every year. It's going to be something that we can work with, and you would recommend year to year?
Through the chair, the financial policies are to put $500,000 in every year. That dollar amount was established.
Okay.
It was not a flexible number. It was a $500,000 number out of the operating budget. So every year when we develop the budget, we automatically set aside $500,000 for the OPEB. And it is our recommendation that we actually should be putting more in, if and when we can. And that would be up for further discussion, but right now, the financial policies that were adopted specifically stated that we will put $500,000.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to go back to the investment policy statement. Did you say that you worked with our financial advisors on this?
Yes.
Okay, so it was you and the CFO and our financial advisors?
Yes.
Looking, always at that bond upgrade?
Excuse me?
Always looking to the, you know, with the eye on the mall of the bond upgrade? Right, we're looking to upgrade our bond rating?
Yes, and we went through every, what we did was, we took all the financial policies, and we went through them to make sure that they conform with all the banking laws today.
Okay.
And we went, and what we did was, we had, I asked them to review them too, just to make sure that we did hit all the points.
Okay, great.
And through the chair, the investment policy statement really goes toward the town funds that include the general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, capital project funds, capital investment funds, stabilization and trust funds. And these are, again, there were policies in place for the investment of those dollars, and investing into secure dollars, and also making sure that there's a certain level of liquidity that you need to have when you invest those types of dollars. So as Marianne said, this policy was updated and developed based on federal and state regulations regarding investment of public funds. And again, the OPEB trust fund investment policy is a little bit different in its philosophy, because OPEB monies will not be removed. We're putting those dollars in for future payments that will be due. So it's, there is no intent, the liquidity issue is less on the OPEB, because there's no intent to remove any or reduce the OPEB, if anything you're adding to it. So it's a different strategy for investment.
Do members have any questions? Do we want to take action on adopting these policies tonight? Do members want an opportunity to review them again after?
I am, through the chair, I'm not prepared to vote on these tonight. I would take some extra time to read through these, and, well, as much as I can understand, and then ask the questions from there, because there is quite a bit to these policies, and yeah, I want to take a look through them and be able to ask more questions before we go forward and approve them tonight.
Through the chair, I would also recommend, if any board members have any specific questions, feel free to contact myself or Ed Kaznovich, the chief financial officer, and Marianne, and we're happy to sit down with you on an individual basis and go through them. Our intent is to bring these to the financial, excuse me, the finance committee as well. As you may recall, in November of 2012, we had a board vote on the policies that were adopted, and then we also had the finance committee vote on the policies, and I believe we actually then had a joint meeting on all of the policies and took the vote at that time. So that's an option as well. We just wanted, we finished them, we wanted to get them to you, wanted to give you several weeks to review them, think about it, and come back to us with any questions. I would also add that Bond Council was contacted in this as well, through our advisors at Unibank, and Bond Council provides the legal advice on bonding and issuing.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do your department or division heads have any further agenda items before we go back? I'm not sure.
Through the chair, I don't think anyone, oh, do you have anything? Okay.
Update on the recent storm. I'll entertain a motion to move up agenda item 8C? I'm sorry, E.
E.
Update on the recent storms?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Great. Again, the first thing I wanted to do is make sure that we thanked all of our public safety and public works officials. I know they're doing their job, but I really believe that they're doing their job better than many people in many communities do their job. I think they're dedicated, they did a tremendous job, they put in countless hours, carefully with lack of sleep. But Bill Coyle just does a tremendous job organizing and pulling everything together. And with the police chief and the fire chief, we made sure that our emergency vehicles had access to our roads. And that being said, we want to thank the residents for doing their best to stay off the roads. The last couple of storms was really a tremendous change in what we have seen in past years. Residents were, to the best of their ability, staying off the roads, which makes it much easier for our crews to keep those roadways clean. Also want to thank Roger Bell Hummer and the emergency management department for all his work. You know, when these storms get announced, it is all hands on deck. We have to bring everyone in for several meetings and activate an emergency operation set. center and really get prepared. So we all work really hard together to get this done. We really focus on getting outreach to the residents, outreach to the, um, business community, and outreach to our elected officials to try to keep you as informed as we can as to everything going on. Darlene Coyle and her staff did a tremendous job that building inspections in public health. You don't realize, but when there's a possibility of a power outage, the Department of Public Health has to get involved because it potentially affects food products. The recent weight and volume of all the snow that we had affects the ability of people to keep their, um, to keep their structures safe from roof collapses. So we want to use this opportunity to remind people to please, if you can, and it is not dangerous, please get up on your roof or have someone do that for you who's a professional, and try to clear your roofs of snow. We're not recommending that you go right down to the rubber or to the shingles because it can damage it with equipment, so be careful, but even if you go within a foot or a foot and a half, um, of, of the roofs, hopefully that will help. And we understand it's hard, you can't always get people to get there, so, you know, if you can look toward it now with the understanding that we're potentially getting another foot, maybe two feet of snow coming up. Phil doesn't even want to hear it.
Mr. Holstrom?
Just as a follow-up through that, um, yeah, the, I've noticed that there's been a lot of work done, there's a lot of work to do because there's so much snow, they don't know what to do with it and where to put it, but, um, just from my past experience and Roger Bellhumor, the chief, the retired chief, will tell you, these hydrants have got to be cleaned out, and it's an ongoing job. The plows keep going through, uh, they push the roads back, and then the hydrants get buried again. So if you have hydrants in front of your house, um, it only takes five minutes to open it up, but, uh, when we need that water out there for anything in that neighborhood, it's seconds, uh, to get that water out of that hydrant. If we have to, uh, we, if they have to get out and, um, dig the hydrant out and then connect, um, it's, takes that much longer to, uh, get the water out. So please, if you have a hydrant in front of the house or in the area, knock it back to about a three-foot radius all the way around it so they can work around it and connect. Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to mention two things. Um, the, the Board did receive emails, we all did, um, from residents, and we heard from residents thanking you for your work, so, um, I appreciate the emails that we get. You know, sometimes we get the emails ranting and raving, but, you know, it's always good to hear from the public, um, when we're contacted for something positive. And while you're going up there, Mr. Coyle, I just want to, um, Julie mentioned, you know, the different issues that we faced during a storm. Well, I know that, um, Darlene just stepped in as department head, and I just want to say personally that, you know, someone that, um, that we forget about during these storms are disabled individuals, and I know that, um, there's issues dealing with privacy, yet safety, and I personally had to contact her regarding, um, a disabled individual in a storm issue. She went above and beyond, she was professional, she was respectful of the resident while, um, the entire time being aware of, um, his or her privacy, and, um, kudos for the way that you handle those sensitive issues as department head. I know it falls under Department of Public Health, but, um, I was very impressed the way you, you handled, um, some of our residents who, who may really needed assistance and, um, couldn't reach out and, again, tiptoeing around those privacy issues because they don't want anyone to know who they are, yet they want, they want help. So, um, I was very impressed the way that you handled, um, a resident this past week. Thank you.
Mr. Coyle?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add a couple of things. One, I want to thank, uh, DPW crew. They do work countless hours with, with no sleep, and quite often it'll be 24. During the blizzard, it was actually 40 hours straight, and, um, quite, as I mentioned, quite often, after 24 hours of plowing the roads, a couple of the employees would jump into the sidewalk, uh, plow the trackless machines and start plowing the sidewalks throughout the night. So they, and, you know, I, I hate to even ask them sometimes because they've been here so long, but I know, well, quite often, we, we want to get the sidewalks open. Um, so they, they do, as much as they'd be, they would rather be home sleeping, they jump into the machine, and they're, they're exhausted, and they continue on. Uh, so I do want to thank them for their hard work. I also want to thank the residents because we have dumped a lot of snow on private properties, um, a lot of intersections. We're pushing back snow, and I know it ends up on private properties. Our priority is to try to improve site distance, and if one storm after another, it's happening, happening repeatedly, and, um, we haven't received a lot of complaints from the residents. I think they've been very understanding with the amount of snow that we have, that we have to put it somewhere. Unfortunately, sometimes we just have to push it back onto their property, and I haven't gotten many calls at all from the residents regarding that, so I do want to thank them. Thank you.
Wait till Friday.
I'm only hearing one three inches so far.
Okay. Well, then I'm with you.
I'll call you on Saturday to let you know.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may add too, um, we used Code Red probably four, five, six times, at least, in the last, uh, two weeks. It's a great system. Uh, we also use it internally for our employees, so rather than having to have a phone tree when we are either going to delay opening of town offices or close, we have a Code Red list just for those employees, and so employees are, are made aware of it. Um, I would use this opportunity to please encourage the residents to check your Code Red listing. I noticed we have 9,500 phone numbers in there, and about 7,000 were active, meaning there are about 2,500 phone numbers that have been submitted by residents or were put in there initially in the system that are not active. So just because you've lived here for several years doesn't mean we have your correct number. So please check your record, call our office if you want to, check the website. We want to make sure you're getting the notification. I also wanted to explain the, the reason, two Mondays in a row now, we first delayed the opening of Town Hall and then closed. We watched the forecast very closely, and it's, it's very difficult to try to make a decision. We don't want to make a decision too early, but our number one priority is public safety, and that goes, public safety for our employees and for the residents and the public that come to our public buildings. So if we feel that we cannot keep the sidewalks and the parking lots clear and safe for people coming to our buildings, then we sometimes have to make that decision to close. Based on the forecast for the last two Mondays, which is very strange because they were both very similar forecasts, yet a week apart, uh, the first Monday, the storm was looking like it might potentially taper off. So we didn't want to close for the whole day, knowing that Monday was a long day. We thought, if nothing else, we could get a half a day in. As the day wore on, it got even worse, uh, so we had no choice but to close. Same thing happened on, on Monday, yesterday. Uh, it looked like potentially they may be a lull around noon, and the forecast were that we might be in the area where there was a lull, and we thought if there is a lull and it's slowing down and we can safely open the building and get to the parking lots, we'll do that. But if it intensifies, we're not going to risk public safety, again, of the residents or anyone coming to our office to pay a bill and, and potentially having them get hurt. So we decided, uh, as late as we possibly could to then close Town, Town Hall. So I just want to reassure everyone that's not our first intent. We don't do it early, we don't do it prematurely. We really look at as many factors as we can. We start speaking at four, five in the morning about conditions and make decisions throughout the day as, as the day goes on, based on current weather conditions. So we thank the employees for understanding why we don't just cancel right away, and we also thank the public for understanding why sometimes we can't get those offices open. We are just very concerned about the public coming into our buildings, if it's not safe for them to be out on the roads. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One, uh, last thing on this, I just want to let the Board know, when the first blizzard hit, because we haven't had a meeting since then because the blizzard canceled the meeting, um, the Governor had declared a state of emergency, and I know our federal delegation, Congressman McGovern, as well as state delegation, have been working hard to, Senator Moore's office and Representative Frost's office, to, uh, encourage FEMA to allow us to put in for reimbursement. So we put in preliminary estimates on Friday, and those preliminary estimates statewide are being used to determine if there'll be an opportunity to put in for any type of storm reimbursement for the blizzard. So, uh, stay tuned on that, there's a, a potential opportunity for that.
All right. I would expect with what we've spent on the storm statewide, we're going to reach that benchmark. So, okay. Um, I know we have a couple other, um, Town Manager items. I'm just going to get back to our agenda here. We have covered presentations and public hearings. We've covered communications. Did you have something else? No, you're good, right? I don't want to hold you up.
Do you want to add anything? Is there?
No.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yep, and that's what, that's where we're at. So we have gift acceptance under Board of Selectmen items, and to, um, the Fire Department gift account from Sergio Di Batista, we have $50, and from Lee Minor, we have $250.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And, did you want to address this, or you just want? We have, um, to the Auburn Animal Shelter in memory of Matthew Jacobson, from James and Maureen Crowley, an amount of $200, from Ellen and Seth Levine, an amount of $50, to the Auburn Animal Shelter in memory of Matt Jacobson, from Betty Gaines, an amount of $10, to the Auburn Animal Shelter in memory of Matt Jacobson.
Thank you. And I just want to thank everyone because it was my son's birthday, uh, last week, so a lot of these donations came in in memory of my son, so I can't thank you all enough. And Darlene, I think she just wanted to mention what good things are coming from the donations too.
Thank you, Julie. I just wanted to, um, uh, let you know that the donations that we get in, um, obviously people have been very generous, um, in the past year for the donations, and I can tell you, the, um, the, the money that people donate are going directly to animals. Um, we've had quite a, quite a busy, a couple of weeks, um, believe it or not, in the storms. Um, we've had, we've, our animal control officer have picked up many animals, and, um, we were able to use, um, funds from that, uh, from that account to be able to help the animals directly. So I just wanted to let you know that, let the residents know that, um, it really is appreciated, and it literally helps the animals directly. So, um, on behalf of the residents and, um, people's generosity, um, I personally, um, appreciate the opportunity to help animals directly, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding the gifts?
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Um, the next item is a proclamation. A proclamation, um, request and invitation came in, but we did not meet, um, due to the storm last meeting, and the event was held on Sunday. I've, I sent the invitation by email to all members, but, um, George Fornia, who was, um, scout master, um, for 25 years, um, is stepping down. He's not retiring, but he's stepping down as scout master, so they, um, had a recognition for him at Scout Sunday at the First Congregational Church on Sunday. So is there a motion? Um, and just so members know, because it was, um, last minute, and Sharon put it together, rather than having members sign, Sharon did a script signature for all members. All members' names were on the, um, citation, but done in a script so that we didn't have to worry about getting members in in the storm to sign. So is there a motion to ratify the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Um, Mrs. Brotherton, I know we met on the, um, subcommittee, and we were going to do an update, but where we look to adopt policies for the Board of Selectmen, if you don't have an objection, I'd like to hold this item to the next meeting when Mr. Simonian is here, where it's, um, Board policies. Okay. Is there a motion to hold this until the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Um, so, the next item is a scheduled joint meeting on the provo, excuse me, proposed revisions to the Town of Auburn general bylaws. These are the administrative bylaws that, um, presentations were done recently by the committee at the high school. And that meeting, Sharon has been scheduled for?
February 26th, Thursday at 6:00 P.M.
February 26th, which is a Thursday at 6:00 P.M. here. Um, under Town Manager Items, the only, okay, we have two items left. Item 8D, which is the intent to hold the Auburn Fuel Assistance Fund golf tournament per the Johnson Golf Management Contract. Mrs. Jacobson?
I certainly, I'll try to be brief on this. Uh, the Boardhead asked me to look into whether the Auburn Fuel Assistance intends on taking advantage of the one Saturday set aside in the golf contract for them in August every year to hold a championship golf tournament. And actually, uh, the request actually triggered some interest in doing so, and a gentleman has stepped forward and said he would be doing that on behalf of the Auburn Fuel Assistance Fund. So they will be taking advantage of that date.
Okay. And the last Town Manager item is an update on the change in date of the Legislative Breakfast.
Yep. That is, um, there is a Legislative Breakfast at the library. Thank you. It was originally, we, so, we put a notice into you, I'm sorry, for March 13th, and it is now March 27th at 8:00 A.M. This is a regional Legislative Breakfast, uh, related to focusing support on libraries. So, uh, everyone is invited to that meeting as well. And it is not on here, but if you don't mind, I'd like to ask for the next meeting, or it doesn't even have to be an agenda, but if you could establish a, a meeting of your Subcommittee on Policy that you just mentioned, uh, just an upcoming item will be the schedule of fees and fines for the revised bylaws. There'll be two different components of it for the Board of Selectmen. The first and most important one is all of the fees and fines, as now recommended in the policies, will be approved by the Board of Selectmen on an annual basis. That is our recommendation. It, that does not happen right now. The Board of Selectmen does not, uh, have the authority to set fees and fines for everything, and we are recommending that you do. Um, so we will be putting together a list of fees and schedules to recommend to this Board of what we feel those fees should be, based on the department heads, uh, who are directly affected by those bylaws. In other words, looking at what the costs are to actually implement some of these policies, and then presenting to the Board, uh, fines and, and fees to be considered for the Board. Our recommendation under the policies, which some of you know because you've gone to the meetings that we've held over the last couple of years, but our recommendation is that the Board review these fees, this fee schedule on an annual basis. Because right now, some of these fees have not been looked at, at, you know, decades, so the fees are outdated. This would make sure the fees are updated, the Board would have the authority to do that. Uh, as a part of that, the Board has policies that fall under you yourself as a Board. Uh, you have, you issue licenses, you issue liquor licenses, you issue, um, amusement park licenses. There are a lot of different licenses you issue. You also have to make recommendations for those fees and fines for those licenses that are under your authority, under the law or under the bylaws. We are also recommending that you recommend fines for violations, uh, because what we have found through this process over the last couple of years is there are many, there are no teeth.
No teeth.
People say, how do you enforce these things? The short answer is, in many cases, we can't. There is no authority to enforce. So that's why we're recommending so many changes in some of the bylaws, to give the Board the authority to enforce, or to give whoever the licensing authority is. It is primarily the Board in most cases, um, under the law, it is the Board. So what we're trying to do is actually give the Board more, uh, ability to enforce what regulations are out there, as well as the Police Department to be able to enforce violations of their traffic, uh, regulations and rules. So, two things that you'll be doing, at some point, we'll be bringing to you, when the by, if and when the bylaws get through and pass, we'll be bringing to you a recommended schedule of fees and fines for all the bylaws that are in there. But in the interim, the Town Council and the Bylaw Review Committee has recommended that the Board Subcommittee get together and look at the fees and fines for those policies that are directly under your supervision.
We need to meet again because we're still working on the very complex entertainment policy.
So something like that, we would be looking for the Board, you know, you'd be rec, the Subcommittee would be recommending to the full Board what those fees and fines would be.
Yep, absolutely.
And that is, again, all of this is subject to final approval by Town Meeting, but, uh, we're hoping that it, it becomes recognized that the Board meets every other week and has a much better ability to keep up the fees and fines, which sometimes are dictated by state law.
Uh-huh.
So if state law says you can only charge a certain amount, we've got to make sure that we do that. Um, so you would have the ability to check that more often. So if possible, if you could have that Subcommittee meeting within the next, you know, few weeks.
Yeah, we'll schedule something.
The special town meeting is March 24th, so if the bylaw, uh, draft bylaw reviews So if the bylaw, draft bylaw reviews pass at that time, bylaws, we would then be coming back to the Board with some recommendations. So we just don't want to come to you and say, we need this in two weeks. We're just trying to give you a lot of notice, but we are going to need to have you look at that.
Great. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. There are no tabled items. There were no Board of Selectmen member items submitted. Does anyone have anything? I just want, I just have one, and it's just a reminder to any, anyone on a committee, especially the Chairs, I was contacted by someone to, when you post a meeting and it's a public meeting, the back door of this building is considered the handicapped access, and that door must be kept open during a public meeting. I've, you know, I've heard that the back door isn't always open, just the front door is, so I'd ask actually the Town Manager to send an email or a letter to the committee Chairs, just reminding them that once they post a meeting, it's their responsibility to be sure that that back door is kept open and accessible to handicapped individuals. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we have the minutes of September 22, September 29, and October 6 of 2014. Are there any omissions or corrections?
No.
As always, Sharon, thank you very much.
Did you?
Well done, detailed and informative. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I just have, I just have one thing that I would like to see included. It's not a correction of sorts, but on the September 22 meeting, served from the bottom in reference to Mr. Delalas, it says, former Planning Board Member. I would appreciate it if the Board would include longtime Chairman of the Planning Board.
Are there any objections to that? With that addition, the Chair will accept them as written. Is there any other business before the Board? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.